I have one clock. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Board of Almondman Retreat, February 2nd, Board of Almondman Retreat. If you would join me in a prayer to open our meeting. Father, I just ask that you be with us today and continue to issue presence and blessings as we do those things that would be pleasing to them and will lead our city forward. In your name we pray, amen.
Would you mind, before we do that, if we just have a moment of silence for Greg Smith? And our flags are lowered. Thank you, Mayor, for doing that. Our city flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Stevens, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Board. As we do each year, we're here for retreat. This being the first Board of you, this is kind of an opportunity for us to sit down and discuss where our goals and strategic objectives will be for the next four years. And what we will do also, I've kind of got an agenda laid out for us, and we have a facilitator here to help us with that discussion. And so we'll get into that in a little bit. First thing that we're going to do is just real briefly go through some revenue and expenditure discussions so that we understand where our revenues come from, what the primary expenditures are that we use throughout the city, how to utilize those funds that we generate, what they all go to. Ultimately, we're here primarily so that we can come up with this Board's goals and direction and for charting the course for the next four years of where this Board wants to go and what they want to get accomplished here. I know it's early on in some of your tenures here, but still yet, you've heard from your constituents and you obviously have some things that you want to get accomplished. As you recall, we sent out just a quick little question survey about what, you know, some of the things that you all want to try to get accomplished over the next several years. We've accumulated those and kind of tried to group them by categories and topics of discussion. We'll get into some of those whenever Chris comes up to discuss and facilitate our strategic planning session. But ultimately, we'll try to jump into this as quickly as we can, understanding that time is very valuable, and we want to try to allow for as much time and discussion on these strategic goals and objectives for the remaining portion of the day. And then whatever time that we need tomorrow, we'll use for Chris to finalize any of our discussion and developing those strategic goals and objectives. And then we have some time allotted for afterwards for various topics to be covered if we need to go into deep dives of anything that's been discussed or we do have some legislative updates that we want to give you, even though it's a short session this year, there still will be some items that are of relevance and importance to municipalities, so we'll try to cover a couple of those as well. But we'll try to allocate as much of our time as we can towards Chris and what we need to get accomplished to chart the course for staff and for the Board over the next four years in accomplishing our goals and objectives. So first off, why don't we go in? We'll start discussing real quickly, this is just kind of a, and the main thing here with this retreat is, you know, we want to stay up in this 100,000-foot view of the city, discuss what some of the overall goals and objectives are. But first, it's important for us at the 100,000-foot view to kind of understand where our revenues come from, where our expenditures come from. So we're going to kind of highlight those real quick. We've got this PowerPoint put together. Hopefully you'll enjoy it. It's got some good graphs and charts on it, so you'll be able to see that. Our general fund sources of revenue, we have probably eight to 10 different ways that we can generate revenue. The majority of those come through our ad lorm taxes and our sales tax generation, 56% of it. As you can see, 38% of that is represented by our ad lorm taxes. That's real property and, you know, properties of land as well as boats and things of personal ownership. Well, I'll go into those a little bit more detail, but ultimately, you can see there that the sales tax represents 18%. That's collected by the state, distributed to the counties and municipalities for where that sales was generated. The inter-fund transfers and supports, other intergovernmental revenues, inter-fund reimbursements, refuse collection fees, those are all smaller, but they do make up a big portion of our budget combined together, you know, approximately 44% of that. Excuse me. So for fiscal year '18, we're estimating our ad lorm taxes to be somewhere close to 14 million, 13.8 million is the number we're kind of projecting at right now. Obviously, this is based on property valuation. We just had a re-evaluation from the county level last year, and it's updated every four year. I think Creighton County used to be on an eight-year cycle, but they dropped it down this last almost six years, I believe. Their eventual goal was to start doing this evaluation every four years to kind of true up the numbers of what the property valuations are. As I said, it was last updated in fiscal year 2016, and it actually took effect for this January 1st is when we first saw, I think, the property valuation revenues were based on the changes that were made. Our current rate is...
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
When you say FY estimates 13.8, can you tell me what that was to the prior year? Is it up? Is it flat?
Slightly higher.
Slightly higher, yeah.
Slightly higher. And the differences year over year are based more on the rate change, the Board elected to change the rates, and growth of the growth or contraction of the city. So new homes, new buildings, new structures, that's what I mean.
Thank you.
So currently, our rate is set at 46 per hundred, 46 cents per hundred valuation. That rate is set by the Board, and it's based upon whatever valuation we have. I think we're at what, $13 billion valuation? I don't think there's a lot of lag, somewhere close to that was our last number. And we generate our revenues based upon that. That was 41 cents, and when the re-evaluation happened, we had to raise that rate. We didn't raise taxes, per se. You can't really apply that statement for everybody because it just depends on what the valuation came back on. But ultimately, as a whole, the intent of the Board was to be revenue neutral. So 41 cents was the former tax rate. Obviously, when we had to go to 46, that obviously tells you that our valuation went down for the FY '16 valuation year. So we adjusted that rate to maintain what our revenue numbers, as close as we could, to where they were when it was at a 41 cent rate.
But the valuation before that would have been right in the middle of the bubble when property values were really high, and then they readjusted down two years ago.
Sales tax, you can see that, 6.71 million currently. That's 2% that's set by the county, 4.75% that's set by the state. The 2% that's set by the county gets dispersed and distributed amongst the municipalities based on their valuations. And the state collects all of that with the Department of Revenue, and then they spurge that down to the county and municipal levels. The inter-fund transfers and supports, fiscal year '18, we're estimating that to be at $3.7 million. This is generally a payment in lieu of taxes for water, sewer, and electric systems. It also includes a 5% of our electric revenues. We have by statute in eastern North Carolina, the municipalities have, that are members of the electricity organizations, have the option of either a 5% of electric revenues or 3% of assets. And five years ago, I guess it was, four years, when y'all, when the Board owed them, and I think Mr. Outlaw and Mr. Kenzie were all there, the first year, we had to make a decision at that point because of our financial situation. We decided, one, either to do the 5%, or the 3%, we chose the 5%. And that is by statute that is allowable by the state of North Carolina.
That was the higher of the two.
It was the higher of the two. Other, you've got the, it includes permits, fees, departmental revenues, interest earnings, other taxes and fees. So this would be some of your building permit fees, things like that, that you would see. Any kind of departmental revenues that we generate from, say, recreation through programs, applications, that kind of thing. Fiscal year '18, $3.6 million estimate on the intergovernmental revenues. These are your power bill funds that we receive. That's close to $800,000 per year. Utility franchise taxes, telecommunications taxes, beer line taxes, all of these taxes that are associated with certain goods and services. We, as you probably remember, I guess it was about a month ago, I can't remember the guy's, how to pronounce his last name, but Shagon, is that it? Yeah. He showed up from the ABC Board. They collect that tax, and they distribute it back to us as a, as a ABC Board.
Did another power bill?
Yeah, everybody knows what power bill funds are. Power bill funds are funds that are collected at the gas tank all across the state. That's the tax that you pay that's on top of what the cost is for the gas itself. That tax is collected by the state, and it is, a portion of that is reimbursed back to municipalities based on the centerline miles that you have, that you maintain within your system. So we're probably, I don't know what the exact number is now that we've taken over some of these streets, but we're pushing a little, close to 200 miles of centerline streets at this point. And obviously, the power bill funds are a formula-based reimbursement that's based on centerline miles and your population. And the state sets that formula and disperses the funds accordingly based on the amount of taxes that's generated from the sale of gasoline and diesel.
Mark, I'm sorry, I missed it. How many miles did you say?
We're probably pushing close to 200 now.
200 miles?
Yep.
What was it before?
Well, I can tell you when I was Director of Public Works, about four years ago, we were in the 155 to 156 range. When we did the transfer for the Alfred Cunningham Bridge, where we did take the bridge and took over streets, I think we gained was about 15 miles then. We've added some streets through some annexation, voluntary annexation areas where we've got some new developments coming in, stuff like that. So somewhere, I don't know the exact number, we can find that for you, but it's pushing close to 200 at this point.
Question.
Yes, Mayor?
On the power bill funds, are those funds also come from grants too, right?
In itself, it's considered a grant.
Yeah.
Slight change, they, over the last couple of years, it used to be based on what the state, the amount of tax the state collected, and that's what formula, that aided the formula. That has now changed. It is now more of a direct appropriation from the state. So that helps us smooth out the potential revenues.
But it is still a formula-based?
It is still formula-based, yeah.
Actually, it's closer to 250 miles, according to the Fire Department tracks. That may be in our ETJ. I'll talk with, I'll get from Matt the actual number.
Our main change, streets are not 250.
Okay.
And maybe it wasn't ETJ, it wasn't close.
That might be, yeah.
And we have to recover. And DOT. All right, so then, as we go down from intergovernmental, we go to inter-fund reimbursements. This is a reimbursement that we have. It's $2.9 million, is what we're estimating to be. That's shared services paid for by other funds. So obviously, we have multiple funds. We have the general fund, electric fund, water fund, sewer fund, stormwater fund, all these different funds. Where there's staff involved and where there's oversight administration involved, we are able to charge back for general administrative services such as HR, IT, accounting, things that, if that were a business standing alone on its own, they would have to pay for, they would have to have, you know, individually to serve what service or purpose they have. So we have the ability to recapture some of that based on, and we base it on evaluating it per what the unit does. So if it's IT, it may be based upon the amount of employees, and I'm just guessing here, but if it's accounting, it's based upon the amount of POs or work, whatever it may be, that's generated from that particular department in comparison with all the other ones. And you break that down as a percentage of what that business use is. So we recapture those based on what that department does in a sense. And we apply that, and then that's paid to, from that particular fund to the general fund where all of these employees are housed in a sense, because they're general government Next, we have the refuse collection fees, represents about 8% of our budget. It's $2.9 million. That consists of your commercial residential service and your residential service collected at curb. We also have our multi-recycling sales there. That's, so we have a fee that we, that the user pays based on either the cubic yard into the dumpster and the frequency of which it's picked up, or you have the residential service, which is based upon the weekly curb side service that we provide. We also do have some commercial units that are treated in a sense almost like a residential unit, that have a roll-out cart instead of actual, per se, commercial service, but there's not a tremendous amount of it. And our multi-recycling scale, sales, that's from the leaf and limb collection that we have throughout the city on our residential sites to our facility. We actually mulch that up, and we take that over to the way, to the energy plant that's over in the industrial park, where they utilize it to create steam, which pumps energy back into the grid. But they buy that, buy that from us so they can generate heat to create steam for the energy. Proceeds from debt issuance, this is basically ever a dollar of debt revenue has a corresponding expense. This is for loans that are taken out in a given year, paid for the capital expenses that we have each year, estimated this year for $1.25 million.
Back to the power bill real quick. It's 171 miles of streets that are power bill eligible, and then the difference in what the Fire Department covers, they cover DOT streets, private streets, and ETJ streets, but that's what kind of the city owns, 171 miles.
And back to the power bill stuff too. That could be utilized for personnel costs that are related to maintenance of power bill eligible streets. It could also be used for sidewalks within power bill eligible streets and, you know, curbing, whatever it may be, it's not necessarily resurfacing. The primary use that we have is toward resurfacing there. But it has in the past, which I would highly not recommend, but it has in the past been utilized for staff, paid for the staff use within power bill eligible streets, and that's just not very good practice, because you're not reinvesting back in your infrastructure.
Have you seen anything come across on the state level? You know, at some point, we thought these might go away, power bill funds, and then what would our plan B be?
That's going to be part of legislative update tomorrow, but it has, just briefly, it has kind of been quiet as of late there. Probably four years ago, there were some discussions about the potential of the power bill funds going away, and they're finding some other way of giving municipalities the ability to recapture some funds to do that, basically taking the load off of the, from the state level to be able to have to power, reverse those funds. But it's been quiet lately. I don't think it was a very well-received thing from all the municipalities that maintain all of those streets. However, there are some discussions again about, and that's part of the legislative update, about whether or not that formula should be adjusted or tweaked in some way. Now, that could either benefit or not benefit municipalities, so we'll just have to see. So revenue summary, this is kind of, kind of what you see here, $36.5 million. That's usually around where our general fund floats from year to year. And also, we've concluded here, is it controllable by this Board? So ad lorm taxes, yes. You set what that rate is, 46 cents per hundred. You could raise it, you could lower it, whatever you want to do, as long as we can cover our expenses, because we do have to produce a balanced budget, which means that our expenses have to equal what our revenues are. Sales tax, we put no on that. Technically, your sales tax, unless you get special legislation through the state to be able to do additional sales tax, is not really something that you can impact. It's really market-driven, it's economy-driven. If you're having a bad economy, you'll see dips in your sales tax numbers. If the economy's going great, those sales tax numbers go up. So obviously, that's not necessarily something we can have a ton of control over. Inter-fund transfers, we can, that's limited somewhat in what we can do. Yes, for fees on the other, we could raise fees for what we charge, whether that's your permits, your application fees, user fees at our recreation centers, whatever. So those are adjustable. Inter-governmental revenues, not directly, we can't really adjust those. Those are kind of set somewhat by state mandate and utility base as well. Inter-fund reimbursements are adjustable, but we've got to make sure that we meet our audit requirements. Oftentimes, our auditor will look to see whether our inter-fund reimbursement, our charges to our other funds are just and valid. So that's one of the things that they look at whenever they come to talk to JR, to make sure that those are not out of whack or out of bounds. Refuse collection, obviously, we can adjust what our refuse collection fees are, whether the residential customers need to be up or the commercial customers or whatever. So the Board has the ability to adjust those fees accordingly. And then debt proceeds, no, this obviously nets out with our expenses. Anytime we go out and get loans for a certain amount, those are offset by revenue generation. So essentially, what we look at is that's, it's basically a wash in the current budget. But then in the fiscal, in the future fiscal year budgets, you'll see an increase in what our debt service is. So that's something that kind of, at the current year, would net out, but in the future, you pay that interest and principal payment. So let's talk real quickly about expenditures. Obviously, as expected, personnel represents a very large chunk of that. To operate and perform the services that we have represents about 58% of our budget between salaries and benefits. The rest of the expenditures, the other biggie is about 30%, which is our operations and maintenance. Primarily, a lot of the operations and maintenance is housed, you have your public works department, some larger numbers there. Your other departments, which are more heavily personnel-based, would be your fire, your police, which they're providing more of a service versus operations, I guess, per se, with stacking levels. You've got the net of new capital debt, you've got the debt service, transfers, other services, contingency. Contingency is the little extra that we put in the budget that has to be, and I can get into that, but basically, we have to do budget amendments to take money out of the contingency fund to utilize for other kind of costs throughout the year. Typically, we use that as our balancing, the budget number. So that fluctuates anywhere from, say, $100,000 to $300,000 or $400,000, depending on what we want to do, just so that we can make sure that our budget's balanced. Typically, we try to keep it $100,000 or so, or less. This past year, we put extra money in contingency, which is something that will be coming before you. At our next Board meeting, we put extra money, about $300,000 or $400,000 extra dollars, into the contingency for a salary study that we did. And that salary study, we knew would probably produce some results where some departments or some positions needed to be adjusted according to what the market was driving for the cost of what that position was. In doing so, we put it in contingency rather than trying to estimate where we thought those would be, so that we could take the money and distribute it to amongst all the different departments based on the outcome of the salary study. So to go over our expenditures real quick, salaries, fiscal year '18, we're estimating that to be $50.5 million. Obviously, that's based on your base salary, your overtime pay, your standby, temporary, storm pays, whatever they may be. Police Department is not budgeted. One of our typical practices, we don't budget them at 100%. Reason being is historically, you know, except for right now.
I was going to say, we just got that.
We just got the email this week. That's for the first time in, well, the seven years that I've been here, our police department is fully, fully staffed, which is a great thing, because I can guarantee you, there's not many municipalities across state North Carolina can probably say that. We do have some retirements coming up, so obviously, that may not last long, but we'll try to get them filled as quickly as possible. But historically, police department has not, has not been fully staffed. They have a lot of turnover. That's just kind of the nature of the beast with police departments. So typically, we will fund them anywhere from 95% to 97% or so percent of what their total number is, just to help out with what our projected expenditures are. We try to stay somewhat within reality of what the true number is. So instead of the $4.5 million is what it would cause, we may budget them at $4.1 million. So that'd be about 10% off or 5%, whatever we want, whatever we choose that we feel is going to be applicable. Should try to cost for, you know, we try to have a cost of living increase each year if we can, but we have included some of those in some of our estimates coming forward. Benefits, health insurance, social security, Medicare taxes, worker compensation, retirement, 401K contributions, so all of that's included in your benefits. Some of those are required, some of them are somewhat, you know, decision process ease, but for the most part, that's the benefit packets that we offer all of our employees. It's included and lumped into the benefits. That's $7.1 million. Fiscal year '18, .6 million, which is $600,000 capital expenditures for the year minus any amounts that are financed. Obviously, like I said, the financed amounts, they kind of net each other out, so you have your capital expenditures, which would typically be stuff that we would pay cash for. Debt service, principal and interest, that's payments from prior years. That's, you make a decision in fiscal year '17, you're going to pay for that in fiscal years '18, '19, '20, '21. So we're looking at about $1.7 million of debt service that we have. That's the debt that we have taken out, the principal and interest over, and that could be anything from, from physical structures to fire trucks to rolling stock vehicles where we do a mass police purchase or whatever for vehicles, that there's any number of things that we have there that we take out debt for.
Nice question, JR. Is there any ruling or any state statute about the length of time you can borrow money for? Do they limit you? Your debt can only go out so many years, so you can get a 20, 30-year, basically, mortgage? There's no...
There's no, there's no real length of time, but there is a length of time requirement before you have to go to the LGC for approval. So any debts, any debts that are for rolling stock equipment that are less than, that are for five years or less, so typically, you'll see that we finance something for 59 months, those do not have to go to the LGC for approval. However, anything above that, anything for land and structures and that sort of stuff, that does have to go before the LGC for approval. So we, so there's no real length of time, per se. However, if we, if we go out 40 years on something, they may question it, and there's a possibility they won't prove, because they're there to make sure that we're being physically responsible on those debt services.
I guess it would be, probably be a Scott question, but I remember back in the day, Mayor, you know, you couldn't obligate future boards. So I didn't know how that, how that worked with the law, because they...
That, I don't, I mean...
Has nothing to do with debt?
What caused, I mean, you're not going to pay for a wastewater or water treatment plant here.
In four years, no, I get it. But I didn't know if there was something that correlated with any of that.
And just real quick, we have some new board members, LGC, they made...
All ones, yeah.
Typically, I haven't seen any go over 20 years, but that may not be the case. But I, normally, normally, those are very large projects, such as a wastewater and water treatment plant. Most of everything is 10 years or less.
Mr. Hartman used to be the king of that, because, you know, all that money for, when they did downtown MSD projects, they were all 20, 25 years, as you know, debts that are just starting to roll off.
We've been rolling, keeping a lot of those things very short lately. You're talking five, 10 years on them, especially the last few years. Now, we did have a USDA loan out there that we refinanced. That thing had 28, 29 years remaining on it, and we refinanced it about two years ago, which, we're all, I think, can see as well, Mark, $1.9 million in it in future interest. So it was a massive change, just for a small, small refinancing.
Thank you.
Operations and maintenance, that's the, I guess, the second biggest of the pot there. $11.8 million. Those primary expenses include our street resurfacing, our sanitation contract. The sanitation contract in itself is about $2.7 million. So obviously, that's a biggie out of that $11.8. Street resurfacing fluctuates, but typically, we try to at least spend what our power bill funds are, so that's anywhere about 800. So by the time you figure 2.7, you're 3.5 at that point. So you're starting to see a very significant course for that. Utilities, to operate our facilities that we have, IT maintenance contracts that we have, there's quite a few of those, so that we are able to keep our employees up to date with their software and equipment. And then vehicle maintenance is another. Our fleet, generally, we have to keep those maintained, our rolling stock, so that we can have our employees equipped, drive around, and function their service, and provide the service that they do. Services, fiscal year '18, that's another $600,000 contracted professional services. That's your legal, your medical, accounting, other, any kind of testing that we have to do, drug testing, whatever, drug screenings, entry stuff for new employees, Scott's fees for his legal services that he provides, all that stuff that's lumped together in the services. Transfers, these are transfers to and from project funds, grants, et cetera. Obviously, we have some expenditures where we spend money to go towards specific funds or grants that we have as matches. So that would come out of this. That's about $1.1 million. And then obviously, as I mentioned before, the contingency this year, we're estimating that to be around $300,000, to set aside for any unforeseen contingencies that we may have. Generally speaking, if the Board were to come up with some $25,000... Generally speaking, if the board were to come up with some $25,000 line item that we can't necessarily fit in the budget somewhere, we would take that as an amendment to the budget, taking it out of contingency and applying it to the specific department where we would actually expense that out of it. That would require any kind of board approval to transfer that money from the contingency fund through way of a budget. So summarize all of that, we're, you know, around $38.7 million, kind of rough estimate, salaries, benefits, all of those accumulated down there, and we kind of hit the details about where that money goes, so.
I see. I think you said that you didn't find the police department 100%. So with the vehicle maintenance, that is included, but then the police vehicles is included within that $11.8 for its maintenance?
What happens is that the garage, the garage actually functions, in a sense, almost like a business, okay? And what we have is each department will pay a proportionate share of what we, I guess, estimate, the fleet being in their department. So if they have, let's say they have 100 cars, and there's 500 cars in the city as a total, they would pay a proportionate share of whatever the overhead costs are, as well as the expenditures in the department of the garage. So in a sense, you're kind of capturing it like a business. So it's almost, it's almost like, it's a general fund operation, much like IT or HR or whatever, and all the different departments pay into that, even our utilities.
Mark, there's about a $2 million difference in your projected expenses and revenue. Where's that coming from?
From balance period, probably from the previous year.
Primarily, the majority of that is the...
Streets resurfacing.
Everybody else...
It's the carryover from the $2.7 million street project to this year's expenses.
So we did it in last year's budget, but it's carrying over this year.
It'll actually be spent this year.
Can I explain that again? I got it, you went too fast. I heard his question.
Year over year, what happens is, is you have, especially, it's really, it's really relevant mostly for power bill type projects or projects that will span the fiscal year. Our fiscal year runs from July 1 to June 30. If you think about the paving season, the paving season typically runs from March, April, November.
This is what we were talking about.
So what happens is, is you've got a $2.7 million contract. We allocate money and set it aside budget-wise for us to do that project, but oftentimes, it may be April or May before the contractor can get to it. There's no way that he can get all that done in a month and a half if we've got a $2.7 million paving contract. So what we do is, we do that as carryovers from the previous budget year into the next budget year, so that we can maintain those expenses and pay those for those...
I get that, but is there some way that we can show it better in our budgeting process? Because I understand you have to sign a contract with the contractor, because they're not going to say, "We're only going to sign a half because it's in this year," or "We want you to, for the full job, because we'll get a better price," or whatever it is.
I'm only going to do that sort of a fund.
Is there, is there any way? Because it really doesn't inflate the budget, doesn't give a true picture.
You have to take that, all the money, pump it into a fund at one time, and do it that way, isn't the way you do it?
Yeah, that's really, that's really the way you could do that, because what you all approve budgetarily, is you're approving, you're approving the streets department, the streets division, that streets organization, you're approving that pot of money. And that pot of money, it, just one amount, and then everything underneath that, we're giving you the detail, everything underneath that is like salaries, benefits, and those sorts of things, and, you know, we tell you upfront how much we plan on paying for paving, and that's our budget line. But you're really approving that one number, so what you're asking for really is more us reporting something to you, giving you the information on, hey, hey, we were not able to complete 100% of this paving program this year, this is how much is rolling into it for next year. So we, and that's really a reporting mechanism. In order to do that for a different way, probably, we need to set up a separate fund for that, which we can't do.
Well, my question was, and I see in the meeting with us, yeah, I guess you were in the meeting with us that day, that, you know, my concern is, you see a budget, and you've got $2 million in a line item, let's say, for paving, and you've only spent a million of it, and, you know, the public says to you, "But wait a minute, is this $1 million? They didn't do everything they said they were going to do?" Whatever it is.
Right.
I just think it gives a better picture. If you're only going to spend a million dollars, even though you've got to sign the $2 million contract, you should budget for that, because you know it's going to be in that fiscal year, and then you've got your carryover. It just looks like we're not spending the money.
Yeah, and unfortunately, you're right, it does look like that, but the reality is, we are spending it, and it's unfortunate as well.
From an auditing standpoint, though, you get nasty earmuffs and flags and stuff on your audit if you don't account for it correctly. So we have to make sure that we account for it correctly, the way it's spent, because what they care about is what is spent within the fiscal year. Unless we were to set aside a fund, which would be the only way that you could do that...
100% that's not being spent in the fiscal year, goes into the next fiscal year.
Understood, but it's, it is going into the next fiscal year, but what you're saying is, is it only shows a million dollars, well, that's what it is, but it doesn't mean that the staff's not performing that. It's bridging two fiscal years in order for us to be able to get the work done.
I know, but you're, again, you've got that amount of money left over at the end of the fiscal year.
Right.
Correct? You've got that money left over, because you haven't spent it. So then you're just reallocating it into the new fiscal year.
Correct.
And adding money to it, or whatever.
Which is exactly what we're showing you right there.
Well, just a simple statement on there, if I understand what you're saying, a simple statement on there saying FY '17 carryover for paving, $1.6 million would resolve that problem, I think.
Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, because if you had to set up a special fund, would you have to specify each project and contract that you're doing? That's too much for a county, so...
No, we don't have to go into that.
So you could have necessarily one fund for each contract pavement project that you had.
Yeah, one paving season, we could establish a project fund for one paving season, so it'd be 1.2, $2.7 million that we allocated last year would be a project fund. We could do it something like that if...
Or you could put asterisks.
Or a simple, yes, a simple note that says, hey, this...
Because in all, in all the world, you know, at the end of that fiscal year, that money basically rolls back to the general fund, and then you reallocate it, because it looks like we're dipping into our general fund at this point to take additional funds out of there when it was already taken out of there anyway. It goes back, and then it comes out, so it's really a wash.
Right, it's a perception thing, but one of the things to keep in mind is, if the board does not reallocate those monies from fund balance, and for that rollover, for that contract that spills over, then we technically can't spend it. So, and so, we legally cannot spend it, so that's partly the way to handle it.
Mark, I play it to like our TBA budget, you know? We take the money out of that balance, fund balance, we put it in there, and most of the times, we don't use it, but we have to appropriate it out of that line item.
Just to be fair, though, it is very transparent, because any kind of rollovers that we have, you, what happens is, is when you approve, when we go through this budget process, you're going to approve a project, and that, or a budget, that budget's going to be $36 million, okay? That's based on the work we're planning to get done in fiscal year 19 coming up, okay? Now, what happens is, is once that budget's adopted, we hit July 1, JR brings before you, probably sometime first meeting in August or something like that, any of the items that we have that are going to be rollovers from the previous fiscal year, and generally, your street resurfacing is in those rollovers, so you can see what it is.
I understand, but that's what generates the questions. Why do we have to keep changing the budget? Why is it all this moving back and forth? And it's just...
Because they operate a $122 million budget, and you've got to have it.
I understand, but most people, the everyday citizen, does not understand that. So I'm just trying to make it as user-friendly, you know, I want budget 101 for dummies, you know, because I'm one of them, and just, and trying to get that. It would be, like Bobby said, maybe a little asterisk by it that says, you know, so we can explain it.
Well, that is kind of, unless the board has any other questions, I just wanted to go real quickly over what our revenues and our expenditures, where we're kind of forecasting them in fiscal year 18, where they come from, where they go, so that everybody kind of understands that before we move into some of our strategic planning about, because everybody's got a lot of good ideas, a lot of initiatives that they want to get done over the next four years, understanding where our budget comes from and where it gets spent. So any other questions that the board has on revenue expenditure? All right.
One other question before we move on. We was talking about a COVID over on Elizabeth Avenue. I don't know where we are in doing that project, and, or you, we were talking about...
One of the storm wire, we're working on those, yeah. I mean, it's either in design, or one of the projects is going to be done. I think we did actually set up a fund for that.
We did, yes.
So, but I can, I can, you know, get with Matt, get, try to get an update on that, as to where they go.
I do have a quick update I can, I can give on that. Those projects, right now, a lot of the, most of them are in the design phase. Matt's supposed to, is trying to have those done for the next couple of months, the full design work done. So we're, the intent is to try to have it done, bid out, so that by, and then we can take out the loan for those by the end of the fiscal year.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Go right ahead.
Okay, all right, well, let's get to the real meat and potatoes while we're here. Obviously, we're here to get some direction from the board. Like I said, this is kind of an opportunity for us to be at the 100,000 square foot level, think about where we want to go over the next four years. And one of the things that, you know, I really want the board to kind of focus on, and Mayor, you were in this with me the other day, and I, hopefully, you'll, you'll remember what I'm talking about here, but I'm going to take real quickly and just show, show you what we're really here to do, okay? Mayor, you'll probably remember this, some of the guy that we watched the video on. There are certain principles that are very important in the success of an organization or a business, and there's three questions that you really kind of ask yourself. This is where most businesses, most organizations, a lot of them operate from, some are successful, some are unsuccessful, and they do their projects and have their missions based on asking the question of what. That's not what we're here for. The next question oftentimes they ask themselves is how, okay? How do we do something? And then the last question, which is where we want to be, where we want to stay here in this entire strategic planning conversation, conversation, is why? Why are we doing what we're going to do? So just as a, for instance, let's use, I think, the example that you gave.
I'd say I remember a movie, something like that 12, whatever name that movie is, about the 12 Americans went in and set up all these bombing missions in Afghanistan.
Right.
They did exactly that.
Yeah.
And before he went in, and he went in and did all that, and came back and nobody died.
Yeah.
And it was the why question, why were they going to do it?
So just kind of a, an example, so let's pick Apple Computers, all right? So what does Apple Computers do? If they were a business and they were trying to answer their questions, they'd be like, they probably wouldn't be in a very successful place if they were like a gateway computer. Nobody has gateway computers anymore, because they probably operated and functioned more in the what and the how. We provide computers, okay? Well, if you just provide computers and you don't understand why you're doing it, then they're not going to be a successful business, okay? Well, what about how, okay? Apple may say, okay, well, we build computers, and we do it with the greatest technological advances, so that we produce a low-cost computer that helps people, okay? That may be your how they do it. But the question is, is why? Why do they do what they do? Well, they want to do it to change the way we think about the future, and all these innovative technologies and things like that, or maybe a difference of why. So when we're thinking about what we want to do, let's try to stay here, this is your 100,000 square, or 100,000-foot level view that we want to do. So why do we want to do what we want to do? So just kind of take, for instance, one of the questions that came up is, you know, one of the, some of the comments that were made, you know, do we want to do a redevelopment commission? Do we want to do a fire station? Do we want to keep taxes low? Well, if we want to build a fire station, that may be one question. Bobby, I want to pick yours, because I know that's something that's come up in your conversations. Fire station may be something we want to build, but why do we want to build it? So the overall goal of our strategic objectives and planning is, what do we want to do? It may be that we want to improve public safety and make sure that our calls and responses and services are as equitable as possible for all citizens. And then we start developing lists and criteria underneath that to get where we need to be. Same thing with, you know, redevelopment commissions, or whatever we may do. That's a methodology, that's a tool that we can use to transform a neighborhood. That's the why. Why do we want to do it? We want to promote community and economic development, to transform neighborhoods within blighted areas of our community. That's a why, okay? So I'm wanting us to really focus on the bullseye, because if we get on the bullseye, we're going to be very successful over the next four years and get what we need to get done, okay? So at that point, I'm going to, I'm going to introduce Chris. I'm going to give him my, read his bio here real quick.
That was really, I mean, that was awesome. I'm definitely good. I had to write down, I'm going to use that on somebody. I'm serious.
Well, thank you. I can't, I can't take credit for it. I stole that from a video that we watched the other day.
Well, that was...
I can't remember the name, the name of the guy, but I'll look it up and I'll give it to you. Really good, it's good video. So Chris Estes is here with us today. Chris served as North Carolina State Chief Information Officer and the First Secretary of the newly legislated Department of Innovation, or Information Technology. Had an annual budget that he operated with, state of $600 million, 2,200 employees. As a member of the governor's cabinet, he provided oversight of information technology projects, managed IT services for state agencies, local governments, and schools. Chris led a collaborative effort by state leaders to establish the Innovation Center, the I-Center otherwise known as, a working lab where state employees, students, and the industry work together to test information technology systems. The I-Center was recognized as a bright idea in government by the Ash Center at Harvard University in 2015. Chris served as the Executive Committee Director for the National Association of State Chief Information Officers. He's also chaired the NASCIO's National Innovation Community Coalition of more than 40 states to share strategies for bringing innovation to government technology. Chris is also the recipient, and I'll have you know, there's two of them sitting here on this board. There are, he was a recipient of North Carolina's highest civilian award, North Carolina Order of the Longleaf Pine. Ms. Bingle and Mr. Astor are both members of the Order of the Longleaf Pine. 2015 North Carolina Technology Association Public CIO of the Year, 2014 State Scoop Leadership Award, and the 2014 Triangle Business Journal CIO of the Year. Prior to becoming Secretary and State CIO, Chris spent over 25 years in the high-tech manufacturing and financial services industries for leading brands such as PWC, Barry and Point, Booz Allen Hamilton, and he's currently providing consulting and interim of CIO services for various sized organizations, boards, and directors, and I think you say you travel to New York quite frequently on some board consultation projects. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Estes, and he is going to lead our strategic planning.
So can I ask, so were you Chris's boss?
I was.
I thought that was the case.
And we're very fortunate to have him here, so.
Actually, a quick story, and kind of why Chris is here, is I worked for Chris for almost three years at the state, and then he departed to go on to other things, but so I saw a side of Chris as a leader every day, but then I think the week he announced he was leaving, he said, hey, since I'm leaving, why don't I lead a session to help you guys do some planning for the future? And we met, and Chris led a session for staff to do some of what he's going to do today, and it was just kind of like a side of Chris I'd never seen, and a real skill that I think Chris has and can bring to this group, which is what made me think of bringing him here, so glad to have you.
Looks like I can do that.
Yeah.
Well, thank you all very much, Mr. Mayor, it's nice to meet you, and board members, thank you for having me today, and hopefully, by the end of our time together, you'll have some direction that you want to give to staff. So first question you're probably asking is, why is there an IT guy leading the discussion about strategy? And to be honest with you, that's what IT people do every day, and I've worked with some of the largest brands. Prior to coming into government, I worked for, primarily with Bank of America for about a decade, not as an employee, but as a consultant to Bank of America, and we did a lot of strategy sessions with Bank of America, part of my role. So all that said, the reason why IT needs to work through four-year plans is because most projects take four years or longer to develop. So we have to be thinking out into the future, trying to get the business people, which I equate you guys to the business people, right? You've got constituents, you need to run, to help the city run as a business, and make business decisions on how you want to spend the money, and how you want to prioritize the activities that's going to happen in the city. So the exercise that you kind of did in advance of coming in, you may not have realized, was part of the process of starting to get what's important to you, what commitments have you made to your constituents, what would you like to see the city do that maybe it's not doing today? And you kind of had an opportunity to send all that stuff in to Chrissy and Mark, and that was all combined and put together for you to review today. And the idea is that we're going to go through that material, and some of it's going to be easy, right? You're all going to agree on, say there's 10 items, you're all going to agree on two You're all going to agree on, say there's 10 items, you're all going to agree on two or three of them without any effort. And then we're going to get to some in the middle that you may feel strongly about, you may not feel very strongly about, okay? And then there's going to be two or three that you feel very passionate about, probably you really want to do or you really don't want to do. And the likelihood is there's someone else in the room that really wants to do it or really doesn't want to do it. So, the process that we're going to have to work through together as a group is try to figure out, as a group, how are we going to come to the center of these discussions and balance out what you really want and where are you going to be flexible? All right, so I'm going to ask you right now, I need you to be a little flexible, because if there's something that's really important to you, let's try to make sure that that happens. If there's something you don't really care about too much, but if someone else cares about it, let them have a win. If you think your constituents can live with it, let's not make everything a battle, right? People need us to come together and set some direction for staff, so they can go out and march against the orders that you're providing to them, all right? So, what we're going to do today, Chrissy, if you'll pull up that, kind of the initial list that you sent back. I think they all have this, right?
They do.
This is also, you know, I think I saw the, Pat, you had that.
That one you want?
Yep. So, these were a lot of the topics that you guys all submitted, and I think they were, some of them were associated with names. We're not going to go through every one of them because of will through the process of this event. But you should recognize some of the things that you see about employee issues, a good section on public safety, the parks and wrecks, some fiscal. And the reason why we went through the fiscal part at the beginning is because you all have great ideas that you want to do them, but somehow you got to fund them. So, you're either going to have to cut something that you're doing because it's more important to do this thing that you want to do, or you're going to have to find funding somewhere. And so, when you're prioritizing activities, funding becomes a real thing. And as you look at your budget, there's not a lot of room in the current budget to do a lot of new things. So, the question is, is there something in the budget that you don't want to do anymore? You're going to have to debate that. Do you need to raise, you have some flexibility as a board to make a decision to raise your fiscal income? Is that something you want to do, right? So, these, I'm not answering that question, I just want y'all to be thinking, where are you going to pull the levers as leaders for the, for the city? On where you can need to raise funding, where you need to cut expenses, so that you can do these things that you want to do. And remember, we're doing this over a four-year time horizon, right? So, we're thinking out, so, you know, some of these things, like another one that keeps coming up a lot is build a fire station, right? So, I see that a lot. So, if we're going to build a fire station, that takes a long time. We're not going to build a fire station in two weeks, right? This is going to probably take almost probably four years by the time you do the planning and go through the architectural review process, go through the bidding process to select a vendor to build the fire station, acquire the land, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All that stuff takes a long time. So, that's why you guys got to be thinking out, not necessarily, do we need a fire station today? Because maybe you don't, but four years from now, based on the forecasted growth in the city, where that growth is occurring, et cetera, et cetera, you're going to be behind if you don't start now, right? Because it takes four years to build a fire station, or whatever it takes, I'm pulling that out of the air, okay? I'm sure that someone here used to be a fire chief or something else, so you probably know how long it really takes. All right? So, then, what was down the bottom here? I know there's a lot of energy around economic development. Every city has a responsibility to its citizens to drive economic development and growth, because that's how you fund new capabilities that the city brings, all right? Any questions about this material so far? You guys all recognize this, you've had chance to review it, there's no surprises on here, right? Okay. So, then Chrissy and the staff took an opportunity to draft those into a set of six primary goals. So, this is where we're going to sink our teeth into this for a few minutes, and we're going to talk about this. They took all the input that you gave them and they classified them into kind of six categories. So, you guys, as the owners of these direction that you're trying to give staff, are these the six categories that matter to you? Are there things that are not on this board that are really important to you that you want to make sure they're incorporated? Is there something here that you don't like and you want to get rid of, okay? So, we're going to kind of sink into this a little bit, one by one. Probably be a chance to read those, all right? And these are not listed in any particular order. They're not prioritized, so don't, don't let the number one confuse you and think the most important thing is to develop and train talent. It might be, but we're not going to try to prioritize number one to six. We're just trying to say, are these the right six things, all right? So, let's start with number one, let's just jump in and see what happens, all right? So, we're going to develop, train, retain qualified staff across all departments. Seems like a reasonable goal. Is there any debate on that goal? Do you guys all agree that that should be a goal of the cities?
Should be a goal of any business department, whatever. You always want to develop your people, you want to properly train them, and more importantly, you want to retain them, because the cost of turnover is much greater than retaining a qualified person. So, that is, that is probably the most important thing. I don't, do I think it's number one in that list?
No, we're not trying to make it number one.
No, and I understand that, but that's very important. I'm curious about a lot of our staff. At some point, I'd like to look at our numbers and see where we're at and see where our whole, we've had a lot of retirements, I would say, you know, in the last several months, maybe in the last year. We have a half MV electric department. Hopefully, we're going to be hiring a director here shortly, I would hope. And I think it's important, because of turnover, it could really hurt us and cost us more.
Others have thoughts? I mean, we're going to get down into the details underneath that, what does that mean? Does that mean we're going to do a study of some of the things that you're referencing? But are we in agreement as a group? Head nods, we're not voting, because I know you're an elected official, so we're not going to be voting. But I just want to see some head nods and some agreement that that is a good goal for staff to focus on.
Yes.
Any disagreement? No is okay, so we're all in agreement. All right, so we got our first goal. We're in agreement that the number one is something we want staff to focus on over the next four years. Now, what that means underneath it, we're going to get to that later, so don't get too hung up on that. But as a high level, you're comfortable with that first goal? All right. Wow, this was easy. All right, so now we're going to get down into some of the tougher ones. Enhance public safety through training and expanded services. All right, and some of this wordsmithing, you guys feel free to volunteer some changes if that doesn't really represent. But public safety represents all public safety disciplines that the city's responsible for, fire, medic, EMS, police, right? I mean, I guess in some ways, public works, you can be part of the public safety. If there's a hurricane, right, you got a bridge that's out, someone's got to fix the bridge. If it's one of those 180 miles, y'all make bend, right? There's a bridge right there. So, public safety, enhance public safety through training and expanded services. I'm not sure what the expanded services mean.
Is that, are you talking about five stations? I mean, I would think that would be expanded infrastructure, but I don't know what the services mean.
One of it was in reference to the fact that there was infrastructure recommended for the fire department. One of them, you'll see on the staff initiatives, is the police department is starting to feel like, as the city grows, they may need to expand their police services and numbers. That would be one consideration under expanded services. But again, y'all feel free to reword that however you want.
Just to kind of give you some ideas of some things that's come down. I mean, you've got the fire station discussion that's happened, you've got the, the use of force judgmental simulator discussion that's happened. You've had the Thurman Road, additional staff there. You've got, let's see. We had the emergency, I'm sorry, the, our communications department now handles and administers emergency calls with regard to dispatching paramedics.
Emergency medical dispatch was initiated.
And there's, there's always been the question lying out there of, you know, should we, should we provide a primary response or actually secondary triage type stuff or whatever for our, with our police department, basically where they're paramedic trained as well as, as well as fire trained? So, a lot of that stuff lays out there, so, you know, the question, the why is, do we want to enhance public safety? That could be through fire, that could be through EMS services, that can be through police, whatever it may be, and expand those services or our training opportunities to allow staff to be able to perform those services to our citizens? So, that's the holistic question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, we have some of our fire, fire department staff that's already certified as EMS workers. And I think with the police department having that, I think that would enhance it for us more. I think having more substations out through the city in the places that we need them, I think that's a very important thing as well.
I'm okay with the enhanced public safety through training and expanded services, as long as we understand infrastructure is in desperate need there for the fire service.
Yeah, I think the, I think there may be some wordsmithing that we could do that capture that.
And even, and Chrissy, I think you may have a handle on this already, but fire department has a very aging fleet. I mean, they've got a lot of their first-line equipment that's approaching 20 years old.
Twenty-five to 30 and a couple of.
Yeah, which is getting beyond their usefulness.
Okay, so there's some effort around infrastructure, the public safety infrastructure. I don't know if we can maybe think of how to word that into that goal.
Question, as far as, you also talked about, you know, having the money to do that. Where in the discussion could we potentially talk about turning our 911 over to the county and saving those funds so that we would combine services? I've been in that discussion before.
I've been in it four times.
And I don't mind going into it.
Three of them consultants.
You know, I don't mind going again, but there's where we can find some cost savings and find some money to do the things we need to do there. So, I don't know where in the future we have this conversation. I don't know if it goes there or somewhere else, but.
I think if, you know, if you think about the order of an outline, you know, you've got number two, which is that, with that one right there. I think you've got As, and then I think you've got where you start using the I, double I, triple I's. I think that's probably down in the I, double I, triple I's, because the reason being is, is we need to investigate, you know, what's the financial benefit? Because obviously, with, with the loss of the employees, that's great, but do you really lose that many employees? Because depending on how the county would handle it, if they're even willing to, because they're not statutorily required to take it over. Not to mention getting the discussion started, which means you're going to have to talk to all the county commissioners about putting some pressure on their county manager to bring that to them and everything else. I think that's way on down the list of how we get that started.
I understand where you're going and what you're saying, but the issue is, the issue is, is that it doesn't need to be turned over to the county. And this is, this is nothing, has nothing to do with what we're discussing today, I don't think. It's as, we don't need to turn it over to county. If we're going to combine the services and let it be a standalone department, I'm all in favor of that. I think it better serve us all, but to turn it over to the county.
Maybe I'm misspoke, but I'm talking about consolidating, almost like we did with the tax department at that time, and consolidating to find some, some savings.
And that's all, it's all, and I'm going to tell you one thing that we've left out here about Chris. Chris was actually the Chair of the State 911 Board, so he has quite a bit of experience with 911 television.
I did run the 911 Board for three years, so I'm familiar with this conversation.
You know, Richard.
Richard Taylor.
Taylor, yeah, good.
So, that said, I do think that it's a topic that needs to be on a list.
Yeah.
Whether it's on today's list, I think is.
Yeah, I just don't know. We're putting goals and objectives, and I agree with Mark, that could be the I, I, you know.
Yeah, can we capture that as a, maybe a parking lot item? Maybe Chrissy started parking lot item, not, you're not going to do it.
Yeah, that's probably not a good term out of here.
Parking lot's not a good term.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, you're asking us to look at this, are we supposed to give our feelings on each one, or are we disagreeing that this is what we want to discuss right now? Because I feel like if we're going to be diving into it, we can be long-winded under one and not really get to the rest of the stuff.
Yeah, we're going to try to get through all six, and then we can talk about each one individually. So, I think on this one, on the public safety one, I was trying to think how you could wordsmith this slightly.
I changed it a little bit, y'all can react to that.
Oh, and expanded infrastructure, is that more in line with what you guys are thinking?
I think that includes.
You know, there's this word enhance is troubling me, and it's your stuff, but I think the word provide, public safety, infrastructure, training, and services, because it implies that it's not good today. Enhanced implies we're going to make it better, and I don't think it's broken. If I look in the room, y'all tell me if I'm wrong, I don't live here. But it does need investment in infrastructure and those kind of things, but I don't think, I think the word provide might be better than the word enhance. Am I wrong?
We already provide that.
Right.
We do want to enhance it, that's the reason why he's making that statement, though. So, I mean, it's not a bad word to have up there, because if it's lacking or we have fire equipment that is 25 years old, it needs to be enhanced, need to update it.
How about provide public safety through enhanced training, efficient services, and expanded infrastructure?
Sounds great.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay, does everybody think we're on, on the right track? Well, I think the process, we're going to get through this today and whatever we need to do tomorrow. And then you guys are going to have some time to sleep on this, and there'll be some wordsmithing opportunity before it's finalized, and then I think you guys will load on it. Is that the right process?
That would be the ultimate goals. We're, you know, coming out of this with staff being able to take some things back, draft together some, some strategic goals with objectives underneath that can be approved by the board.
Today is, we're trying to get a good straw man.
It was a couple of more weeks.
Is it four years or is it one year at a time? Is it, I mean, I mean, there's some things, are you doing short-term?
Personally, I think you need to be thinking about what impact can I have on the community that, that could impact them 10, 20 years down the road. That's my personal opinion, because you're making huge decisions, especially when looking at fire.
So, we are drafting a strategic plan, a long, long-range strategic plan for the community, is what you're saying, all right? Because that's.
But there should be, there should be a goal, there should be objectives underneath that, that should be measurable and achievable throughout this entire process. It may be that it takes us six months. I mean, there's one that I'm thinking of that's underneath this, develop, train, and retain qualified staff. Two weeks from now, or a week from now, we're going to be bringing before you the recommendation that we have to fix some of the compression issues that we have within our budget, or within our department as far as staffing. We've set aside the budget money for it, we need to do the budget amendment so that we can apply that toward all the departments to fix all these issues. That's one little quickie you can get off of there that's a two-week thing. Then there's going to be things that are one year, three years, five years down the road that we need to get done. It's going to take some time.
So, directionally, head nods, pretty good with number two. Might need a little bit of tweaking, but, and you don't want to know the detail underneath it, I get it. I'm just trying to get these six, or seven, or whatever it is, or five, all right? Enhance park recreation opportunities for all citizens. Seems reasonable? Reaction?
Awesome.
Awesome, okay, good. Any, any major heartburn over that? Is it not worded the way someone needs it to be worded?
My discussion for the element is, when you say all citizens, is that the citizens of New Bern, or is that?
I was thinking the same, but.
Yeah. I had that discussion with Foster yesterday, asking how we could charge people who are not citizens? Because we're paying for it all and everybody else is using it, that's really how it works.
There was a breakdown of, of city fees for residents, of citizens of the city, and then if you not live in the city, that you pay additional fee.
Well, how do you charge somebody for walking into a city park that's not a city resident? I mean.
The numbers that you do.
You know, it's tough enough for like different functions going on.
Let's just take, let's take church, yeah, let's take church league baseball. So, those churches are all over the area, and they come and use our fields for ball, you know, for baseball or softball, whatever they use them for. But a good majority of them don't even live in the city of New Bern. Trent Woods, River Bend, somewhere else, but they use our fields.
I want to be fair about having you brought that up. And I don't know their sales numbers, but I can just look at Trent Woods and say, there's not probably a lot of sales tax revenues. There's not a lot of businesses out there. There's not, same's true with River Bend. And the flip side of that is that even though we supply those things proper for a pretty good 10-mile radius of New Bern or something, the truth is, is that River Bend and Trent Woods come into New Bern, spend a lot of money, and we get a lot of sales tax. So, you know, we want to be fair and equitable to all of that, even though the city of New Bern residents, taxpayers are paying for this. And probably there's a considerable amount of sales tax revenues we get from Bridgeton, James City, River Bend, whoever I left out, Trent Woods, that we thank them for that, spending that money in New Bern, and it does generate revenues. And in turn, we can offer recreational opportunities, and I think that's probably why we do that and don't know we do it, because I don't think anybody in RIM has its figures. What, what, what do we get in revenues?
Uh, not enough.
Well, I mean, but.
I have a little.
But sales taxes. I mean, you're going to get a new Freedom 6,000 square foot shopping center and all the box stores and all. That's not going to be in New Bern, North Carolina, people shopping there, it's going to be in New Bern, along with Trent Woods or James City. And we thank them for that, and so, you know, that's why I think we have historically put those recreational.
If you look at the demographics of the Trent Woods, of the River Bend, they have more disposable income than the majority of citizens that live in, in New Bern. But, you know, you can just look at the average salary for the city of New Bern versus average income versus.
I mean, it's reasonable to put those stipulations on, like utilizing the fields, because my son is part of a church league. I don't go to that church, I go to a different, but you have to be affiliated with a church, so if we. So if we develop some stipulations in regards to using the field, that you have to either be a resident, and if you're not a resident, you have to pay a fee. I mean, that's common across the board nowadays with things, when you do things, because, you know, you have outsiders coming in, if they tearing the stuff up, and, you know, we as citizens have to pay to fix the infrastructure when they come as they go, so.
I look at expanding parks and recreational opportunities as expanding our services for our young people, not necessarily the parks and recreational infrastructure, although we're gonna be doing that as well. But, I mean, I think we've got, we've probably got more parks than any other city in North Carolina. I don't know, how many do we have? It's like thirty of them or something?
Twenty-six.
I mean.
Twenty-eight, twenty-six, something like that.
Twenty-eight parks inside the city of New Bern now, you know? But, but what we don't have, and hopefully we will have real soon, is opportunities for young people.
So I think, hold on, I think what started this discussion, which is very helpful, and I think you guys, is the word all citizens, where is it?
She quickly removed it.
She quickly removed it. So removing the word all citizens, but just enhance park and recreational opportunities.
And I agree, I agree with what the mayor says. The people, and I, I, I fish, and what I think about when people come into New Bern to use our, our boat ramp at Lawson Creek Park, they're gonna probably stop either when they leave or before they get there to fill their boat with gas, and their vehicle with gas, and buy their drinks, and beer, and sodas, and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, that is an.
Sales tax revenue.
Foster did tell me yesterday that he's got a new software program or a computer program that what's gonna happen now is these teams, if people register, they'll be able to put their address in, and it'll be able to tell us that a city resident, not necessarily the team, a city resident or a, you know, an out of, a non-resident. And he said what they could probably do is, let's just say, the, the registration fee, you know, is, is twenty dollars for residents, it might be thirty dollars for non-residents, and they'll be able to tell the head of the team, okay, ten people at this amount, ten people at that amount.
So that, to me, that's a, that, you're getting into kind of the.
The weeds, I'm sorry, yeah.
How, how are we gonna do that? Now, it may be a list under here that we're gonna change the fee structure for using the, the parks, right? But right now.
But that's a good statement.
You guys feel comfortable, you wanna use the usage of the parks? Okay.
I changed it again.
Oh, enhance and diversify parks and recreational opportunities, what does that mean, diversified?
I think the key point is for us, and this, this is gonna go down into the fiscal responsibility and the way you finance and pay for these things. In order for you to get part F funding, you have to provide opportunities of recreation that you do not currently have. So in order for us to do that, thinking about Martin Marietta Park that we're, that we're looking at, is a diversification of offerings. Don't go build another swing set and provide a dog park, because the dog park and the swing set, we already have another park, which means it may affect our funding mechanisms when it comes to part F grants and some of our free money that we get to help us offset some of our costs. So I think it's probably important for us to look for diversification of offerings with our parks and recreational systems, because not everybody plays football, not everybody. I mean, we've got people talking to us right now about wanting to put pickleball courts in. We've got tennis courts, we can, that aren't utilized. We could potentially reinvest a small sum of money to re-circus those courts, re-stripe them and put up some nets, and now provide pickleball courts for a tennis court that's not utilized.
So are you guys, is the board, are y'all in agreement that diversifying, the way you described it, that word fits, that diversifying the offering of the parks, we're not, everyone's not gonna have a swing set in every park, because we've got enough swing sets?
I mean, some of these parks aren't parks, if you wanna be, I mean, they got benches, especially in my ward.
Well, if they have a bench, we're not gonna put a bench in another park.
I know, we need to actually have a park, so, you know.
Okay. So enhance and diversify parks, is that?
recreational, yeah, I think that's good.
Are y'all comfortable with that right now? All right? All right, now I'm getting the tougher ones as we go down. Maintain fiscal responsibility while providing value-added services, so it's. And I'll challenge that one as a goal, in that I think by law you have to have a balanced budget, right?
Yes.
So if you have to have it by the law, it's almost, this is almost repetitive, right? Because the law dictates that you have a, now, staff may have meant something different by this.
Let me go back to the group of things that we were trying to collect into one. That, that's kind of some of the comments that generated the need for a goal in that area.
Got it, easily. This was input from you as board members. Let me shall read that for just a second.
Are you talking about C there, Chrissy?
Number four.
Number four, all of.
All of those.
I agree.
Those are comments that were made by the board as a whole.
And then we were trying to roll that up into a draft goal for y'all to react to, but that's what drove that, Chris.
Got it. So the question, I think for the board, do you still feel like you wanna do some of these things? We don't have to debate every one of them right now, but as a general statement, do you wanna do these things, and how are we going to represent that in a goal statement?
I mean, honestly, I think we do that already, and the way that the staff has handled maintaining, you know, low rates and taxes right now, I mean, to me, I feel like we need to not reinvent the wheel.
Okay.
I would just say that if you go back to your potential goals, I mean, everything there, with the exception of the very bottom one, promote economic development, is all an expense. So you only have an offsetting revenue in your last goal, and even that one could have some expense that goes along with it. So if you don't maintain fiscal responsibility, then essentially what you're saying is we're gonna accomplish all these things, one way or the other, at whatever level you wanna go with, and we're gonna raise taxes to do so. Unless you stop other services that we're already offering, and we've already said we want to enhance and diversify what we're doing, and we want to expand infrastructure, and I think it's gonna be hard to do that if you don't have something in there to keep you grounded in a fiscal responsibility attitude.
Everybody kind of concur with that, some head nods? Do we need to have some, some fiscal goal to anchor it to?
We always have to have a fiscal goal, and we always have to have fiscal responsibility. But we can get creative and think outside of the box, I think. And we may, you know, I, I agree, we gotta look at everything, you know, there's a, a revenue and expense to everything you do.
Well, as long as, Mark, were you at what point going, and Jay, are we talking today about projections for a five-year period, is that somewhere else in your presentation? Or is that bringing, bringing up now, or what?
Yeah, I mean, it's part, part of that, yeah, five-year projections.
I think the thought was to try to get some agreement on where you wanna go, and then let's talk about whether we can afford everything you wanna do, and if not, how do you cut, or how do you expand revenue? And then narrow down that, you may have to narrow down the list if you're not willing to generate revenues or think.
From going on these meetings, metro mayors and all, I mean, there's, there's a limited other, a source of alternative revenue sources for government. So that means you have to look at your expense ratio and figure out how cost share, equipment, and all kind of things that you can streamline. The efficiency of your government, you don't go out and get in broadband anymore, that I'm aware of. That's, you know, that was something that some cities were looking into. You could do more user fees, but there's, there's just limitation on where you can grow your revenue source besides economic growth. And so from that, you know, one thing we had discussed earlier was what, what debt structure services are going offline in the next five years, and there's not really a lot going off, right?
Most of the stuff that we have, we have either paid off or have some time left on them. I don't think we have any major ones.
Uh, no, the, the next big drop, actually, there's a few hundred thousand dollar drop in FY twenty, based on current debt, not necessarily the stuff that we have that will probably be taken off. FY twenty-one, there's another big drop, twenty-two, and then, and then twenty-three. But again, that is stuff that we currently have, not necessarily things that we'll be bringing on, like additional equipment over the next few years.
So when you talk about the equipment, you know, backhoes for public works, or, you know, we may have to buy, you know, just think a knuckle boom truck. We, we're expected to continue to provide leaf and limb service unless we decide to do away with it and replacing that rolling stock, they're a hundred fifty thousand dollars every time we buy them. So when you, when you go look at those major pieces of equipment, they cost quite, quite a sum of money. And what we do is, is we, typically, the larger ones will, will accumulate and finance them all as a package, and then that debt comes back on, but we can't predict that right now, I mean, we couldn't, but.
Are there any tax incentives associated with the Columbia project? That would hold back, because I assume it's gonna come online in this next fiscal year there, because they'll be open, is that correct? Would that tax value come on to us, or?
Property tax-wise, property tax, property tax for the coming fiscal year will be based off the assessed value as of January one, this past January one. They're only about, I think, halfway through.
It'd be a partial.
So it'd be a partial, so half, about half the tax value will come on for next, this coming fiscal.
Okay, but are, did we offer, I mean, because if I wasn't here when they came on, could we offer them any tax incentives or anything like that, that would preclude us from getting that?
Tax incentive, no.
So back to the fiscal, the fiscal responsibility, if we go back to the previous page that you had up, which had some of the goals that they were talking about. So is there, the nine-one-one is an example, you know, asset fiscal responsibility through collaboration, potentially reducing expenses through collaboration. There may be some other areas that you guys can collaborate in other counties or other cities to share infrastructure, share certain types of equipment, maybe some type of road equipment that's very expensive to procure, you don't use it all the time, maybe you can share it with a county next door. So there are collaboration techniques that other areas have done to try to reduce the, the cost that you guys individually have to pay as one city. All right, so I don't know if that may be a way to get to the point that you were making about trying to find ways to be fiscally responsible within budget constraints that you guys have. Raising taxes is not popular, probably, but it's one of those things that you have a lever, you know, to be fiscally responsible, you may, to build a new fire station, you may have to have a new way to fund that.
Well, when you're looking at number four, cemetery landscaping, for example, I mean, I'm embarrassed as an elected official, the condition of our, our district, that we are not looking at that as more of a business model of selling. I mean, you go out to a commercial cemetery, and you see the way they run it, and you see the way, you know, why, why are we not looking for revenue sources within our cemeteries where we can put this money back into the condition we have right now, is.
No, I think, though, that I had, I had that conversation, because they're in my ward, and I had that, or two of them are in my ward, I had the conversation with Foster yesterday, and, you know, he's really gonna look into it. I think we just need to give him a little time, and we may see some difference, but he's really reviewing that, seeing what we can do to, to better utilize that and make it more of a revenue source with better caretaking up there. He's already gonna go and cut some trees down and do some things that.
I mean, I'm like, as a city, if we don't wanna do that job we're doing, I, I say outsource and put some in there and let's outrun one, and take it from there, but.
So if you're gonna do that, then you've gotta do it before you sell off all the plots. The problem is, is we have a piece of property that we've already presold at way lower subsidized rates, probably, because we wanna be the lowest of everything. I, I can guarantee you the cemetery that's out there, whatever it is, is probably three times higher than what we are. So if you, if we wanna charge those rates, then we could probably maintain them the way that they should be maintained, or else we're subsidizing with our tax rate.
Well, is that some of the stuff we can see? I don't think I've ever, my first go around, I never saw anything that would tell us, you know, a hundred percent full rates, how much we can expect to take in.
Yeah, and, and the only, the only functional cemetery, pretty much, where we sell anymore is New Bern Memorial. The rest of them are pretty much either sold, they may not be completely buried out, per se, but they're sold, and especially, you know, our, our historic cemeteries, they're.
And they're the ones that take the most.
Seagrove, Seagrove Extension, a lot of those are sold out. The only one we're really selling from is New Bern Memorial. So what you have is a perpetual maintenance, a professional expense obligation there, and the, the revenue is not there because it's already presold. And then, and then once again, you know, here we are at New Bern Memorial, and this came up several years ago because there was some complaints about, you know, the rates. But then if we try to ask too much, we get complaints on that side, too, that, hey, the rates are too high, we can't even bury our loved ones anymore, to some citizens that we live within the city. So if you wanna charge that amount, you gotta be willing to, I guess, accept those complaints that are there, because you'll get them, I promise. We've been there, and like I said, if you wanna bury your, over there on, I can't remember the name, name of the other cemetery, the probably, Greenley, they're probably three or four times higher than what we are.
I'm talking more like Earn Gardens and things like that, where there's, there is revenue.
Right, you're absolutely right.
And I mean, why, why is the board's not looking at that, or hopefully our new recreation director is, that there are some revenue generating opportunities there that we need to jump around on.
So I think it's, we're making this little list here. Those are either workshops or other meetings that we can have, where we can get the detail and the information, because I would like to see that, and I think a place for earns is, you know, absolutely what we need to look at.
Chrissy, can you get back to that goal?
Sure.
So what I'm, what I'm kinda hearing the group start to coalesce around a little bit is, we definitely wanna keep a fiscal responsibility as a goal, and we wanna do that through potentially outsourcing some of the, some capabilities. We wanna do it through looking at new revenue sources. So we don't have to define what all those are today, but I think.
Can we just say maintain fiscal responsibility and end it there?
You could, and the sub bullets underneath it could, could be.
Be all the other things.
Look for new revenue generation opportunities and et cetera.
Some of them are value-added services, but then some are just more revenue streams.
Right.
A revenue stream isn't necessarily a value-added service.
Okay. So I think when we get to the detail of what's under fiscal responsibility, I think that's where you'll get into the, some of the stuff that you're referencing. How do people feel about that change? Consensus?
Yeah.
All right. Well, heat moving. Invest in city infrastructure to ensure long-term sustainability. So infrastructure, probably roads.
A lot of comments about roads and stormwater from y'all's feedback, so trying to roll that up into a goal.
Do you wanna hop back to?
Sure.
That page where it shows what they had sent in, right there, crew road conditions. Any debate on that one? Go back to the goal, is that worded the way you guys feel comfortable, invest in the city infrastructure?
Yes.
My, my thing is, is to make sure that we have enough staff to maintain that, either contracted out, we can do one or the other. Because sometimes we have to pull staff from other departments to help out. Okay?
And, and just as a side note, and I invest in city infrastructure, especially when it comes to stormwater issues, especially if it creates flooding, there's FEMA funds out there. FEMA, lost now, it's four oh four, four oh six funds, but I think it's four oh six, isn't it? Four oh six funds that are certainly, I mean, cities in North Carolina get them every year.
So is the word invest, under that premise, is the word invest the right?
I think that's the proper word, I mean, I just, just as a side note.
Well, it could be operate, right? Operate the city infrastructure, ensure long-term success. And where the money comes from could be federal funds, could be state funds, could be city funds, right? The word invest, to me, implies that you're taking New Bern taxpayer, city money.
That's what.
Well, we have to, I mean, we've, we've got, we've got some very, very old infrastructure that has got to be fixed and replaced.
Okay.
We have to, I mean, this, this board's already invested a lot of money in it, and have you not? I mean, yeah.
Well, I haven't, no.
Yeah. So I think, I think it's something that we have to continue to do.
All right.
But I think finding the revenue or finding other funding sources might be a good thing to, to, to look into.
Okay, we probably capture that as an objective underneath that goal. All right. All right, any other changes to that one? No, all right. The last one that's on the board, promote economic development and redevelopment housing in commercial areas. And that's a lot of stuff in that one sentence.
Well, from, from, from my point of view, is that we have some parts of the city that's very old, and we had some issues with them, and a lot of the houses was occupied maybe thirty years ago. Every home there was full, and then there are a lot of the folks that passed away, and then the floods came through, flooded them out, FEMA come in and just say no more developing there, and there are a lot of the houses built right on the street and that sort of thing there, so that's a large undertaking there that I see. It's a lot there.
I always see it as being, should be separated. I mean, promote economic development is one thing, and then redevelopment, Redevelopment Commission might be another thing, am I, am I wrong? I mean, promote, promote. I mean, promote, promote economic development is.
What's the difference between the two in your mind?
Well, we'll go back to it.
Yes.
Yeah, redevelopment in housing and commercial areas, I mean, I'm, I'm, are you talking, are we talking about the redevelopment commission that you, that we've been talking about?
Maybe one way to meet that.
That's a tool, as she, she described it much better, or you described it more, it is, it would be a tool, um, a redevelopment commission would be a tool, so it would be what you said, blighted, you know, um, working to change blighted areas, because we have areas of our town that don't look like any other neighborhoods and I think our, they should at least, you know, we've gotta bring them up level, nothing's been done in forty years, but I think that's.
I'm sorry, I think this group of things that I was trying to roll up, right, there's, there's redevelopment and we have a big commercial corridor that's starting to see some movement and development, but then we have these blighted housing areas and other areas that are more housing, they're not really, I mean, they're economic development, but they're more redevelopment of, of some blighted areas and so there's kinda that.
They do include commercial areas, so it would be housing and commercial, it's our minority neighborhood is really what it is, but you describe it as that and that's, it needs attention, has had zero attention.
But then there's also a big economic corridor and growth opportunities there that we have started with Columbia Development.
I look at them as two different, you know, I look at that, then there's pure economic development because that is definitely, you know, ta- it's gonna expand your tax base, it's going to do that. In, in this area, it is economic development in some cases, but it's gonna provide some jobs, you know, people building houses, doing things like that could potentially open up new businesses as we redevelop the business corridors through these, these areas.
So if someone, if someone, uh, a business comes in to your town and puts their operations in an old, you know, Walmart shopping center that's been closed down for twenty years, that's, is that redevelopment or is that economic development?
Economic.
I look at it as both.
Both.
Yeah, I look at it as both.
Yeah, I, I, that's why I'm trying to, in my mind, and you guys own this, so at the end it doesn't matter what my mind thinks, what's the difference between redevelopment and economic development other than the location and whether it's an old building or a new building?
I recognize just the word promote, I mean, promote economic development to me means just go out and promote New Bern and, and get businesses in here, uh, and redevelopment is, is, I, I reckon I was thinking more of the residential properties than I was commercial properties, so, I mean.
That's fair, yeah, I can, I can see that. So I, I can see where you get promote economic development, but I, I'll go back to this new business, I come in as a new business and I wanna locate in New Bern, are you gonna show, and I say, here's my business requirements, I wanna be close to my workforce, the demographics of my workforce look like this, what land are you gonna show me? You're gonna show me the land that has nothing on it, or are you gonna show me the, you know, the old Walmart that's been closed down for twenty years, or Kmart's probably a better example, right, because they went out of business.
You got a question?
So, or Sears even better, so is that, that's still economic development, but it could be redevelopment in an, in an area that may need that, that has a great workforce nearby, right, you got residents right in the middle of the central area of the town, right? So that's where I was thinking the two were together, but happy to understand how they're different.
What about an area that you have trailers in there and the trailers are very old and that how do you encourage someone to come in to build a house there, but they was grandfather in and you wanted to bring this area up, uh, how do you fix that?
Hey, I agree with that, 'cause he's the alderman for the ward that my parents live in and it's a new development and then there, you have a for sale sign to, you know, grow more development and then you roll it onto the street and it's terrible looking and then you go down and it's all these nice houses, so I understand where he's coming from with that.
Oh, and as elected officials, you guys can set policies that drive the behavior you want to happen.
But these guys are grandfather in there, these, these, these old trailers are grandfather in and then over here you have a flood zone that is all empty lots and then the city may owns two or three lots in here and then you have light houses going this way, you know, this is something that.
That's all part of redevelopment mission.
And I, I guess the same thing, we have, and, you know, we, the Days Inn property, we're gonna have to address that, that would be, it's an empty lot, but that, we're looking at that as redevelopment of a lot, would you, would that be correct? Redevelopment, would you?
Every lot in the city of New Bern that used to have something on it is technically redevelopment.
Yes, that's true.
Unless it was a raw piece of land since the earth was, uh, since the earth.
Unless it was forest and we go in and.
I mean, um, you know, in a sense, I, I sort of see what Chris was talking about, I mean, redevelopment, economic development, you kinda have, they're, they're kinda married together to some extent, I mean, if you have a, if you have redevelopment that happens on the Days Inn Hotel, hopefully it is economically driven, uh, that it's gonna, you know, enhance the economy, it's gonna be some investment, whether that's private, whether that's public and we have to do it to, but essentially it's investment into an area that will produce economic results is what the intent is.
So on the commercial side, I think it's easy for us to wrap our arms around, I think the, the housing side of the equation is a little more complex. In that case, redevelopment of a housing area, when you have people living there, they all individually own, you know, ten parcels of land, the only way to change that setup is probably to get a developer to come in and say, hey, I'm gonna buy all ten parcels of land and create this new super neighborhood, right? I'm just thinking out loud, but I'm trying to figure out how do you redevelop and the commission can establish that, but is that different type of redevelopment than say a commercial property? Because I think we all can get our arms around it quickly, the economic development bring in a big business, but when you start talking about like one individual house, a trailer, that you wanna replace that's on a flood zone, how do you encourage that kinda behavior, right, as a, as elected officials? What levers can you pull if any? Now, maybe you can't, maybe there's not a lever you pull and you leave this to private sector to figure out, right, when the developer wants to go buy all those houses to build a new, a new neighborhood, right? So that's the kinda stuff, I think, when you have a comment.
Yeah, well, underneath, I know that, um, we're promoting, um, the redevelopment commission for, you know, the minority wards, but I also feel that as a goal we need to, you know, whether it's II or Triple E, it needs to be added that we need to look at the city as a whole.
Oh, absolutely.
In all of the wards, because, you know, like I said, that's wards four and look at, you know, holding, you know, these private developers or landlords accountable for what they look like, even with commercial businesses, because there's some commercial businesses like on Martin Luther King that have not been utilized and probably, I've been here seven years, so seven years and they don't look pretty on the outside, so I feel like as a board, we need to look at the city as a whole with redeveloping and promoting and wanting people to come in and, you know, keeping people at a standard of you need to keep your business up, you may pay, you, you pay taxes on it, but you need to keep your building up so that, you know, people coming in, potential developers coming in and like, oh man, look at this property, you know, am I gonna get people who wanna come to my business and I have this, you know, dilapidated building across the street from me? So I say A for the minority area because it's been lacking, but B as an overall, we want the city to be.
So, Mark, I'll just put you on the spot a little bit, what control does the board have over, say, a business on a Martin Luther King that's not keeping their business upright? Does the board have any authority to pass a regulation, a rule?
We do have all, uh, commercial minimum standards, I think, when we adopted some time ago.
I, I, I didn't think you had commercial standards.
We do have.
Really?
We do.
Yeah, we do, we do have commercial standards.
So the board does have some authority for providing, setting some baseline standards?
Yes, sir.
And they have executed those standards.
Now, and, and, you know, I guess there probably are some limitations and I'm, I'm, I'm not a lawyer and I didn't sleep at a Holiday Inn last night, so I heard it spread, but, um, um, I would probably have Scott weigh in on some of the legalities of what we can and can't do with regards to our authority, because you do start getting into private property rights and minimum housing code requirements and stuff like that, which may be more safe to set, but, uh, obviously we can, we can definitely control things that moving forward with, with some of our development standards.
I mean, it's complaint driven, right now we are on a complaint driven system, so if somebody doesn't complain, it can sit there and nobody would do anything about it, we just don't ride around and say, that looks bad, we're that's like saying we shouldn't.
Maybe we should, well, then that's something you have to speak up and say.
Right, and drive around and look at, you know, especially that neighborhood, because some of it looks like you're out of code and that's something, it's our responsibility as the board of Alderman to make sure that we're providing, you know, safety, so if we see something, it's like if you see something that doesn't look right, we need to get in, you know, whatever department to let them know so they go out and take a look at their, you know, their job on what they need to do, it's, it's safety too, so, I mean, overall, you know.
I thought that was a job of a nuisance abatement officer.
But if we see it, we, you know.
I thought that was their part of their job.
They don't ride around, they get complaints and then they act on them.
Well, they should ride around.
I agree.
Well, maybe there's not enough of them.
Yeah.
So what I hear.
We have one right now.
So in theory, the board could approve funding to hire five more nuisance officers to go around and do this.
Well, being, being a part of this for a long, long time, it's, it's a, it's a bad situation and we're way off secure on some of this stuff, but, I mean, a man's home is his castle and that's the way the law review looks at it, you know, fire codes don't even apply to most residential properties, you know, so if you go up there, if you see somebody that's living in a house that's just really in poor condition, are you, do you want to throw them in the street? Or do you, you know, or how do you, do you want to do something to maybe try to get their house and help the standards, you know, that's, you know, you just can't, I mean, cities tried several times on several properties trying to get stuff done and it's just, it's almost, it's almost impossible if the homeowner is living there.
Right.
And, and there's nothing that can, they can do.
Well, being a board and, you know, we build these public partner relationships, you have, have a tough.
That's exactly what the redevelopment and housing commission hopefully will do.
Yeah, so back to the goals then, is, is this, we combine the promote economic development and redevelopment as one thought and should the commercial and the, and the housing be separate or should they be together with them?
Together.
Together?
I don't think it makes any difference.
Okay, doesn't make any difference, all right, so we'll leave it the way it is?
Maybe when we start getting into objectives, it may naturally split or we may be able to create objectives for that one goal, or we may say, wow, we really need objectives under each and then that would kinda split it into two goals.
All right, so for now, we're gonna leave it the way it is. All right, so we've got six goals, if these were the six goals that we did for the whole city, is that it or is there something that's not represented here? And I know you guys had a chance to provide your input, right, is there something missing within these goals, we're gonna get down into each goal.
I think they're broad enough that they cover everything, it's when we get into the weeds, you're gonna have a lot.
We're getting into the weeds, we're coming, the weeds are coming.
No, I think, I mean, I can't imagine, the only other thing, I mean, this is, um, you and I just mentioned this briefly and I brought the letter, you know, about the elections and what we wanna do, right, you know, we're being asked by Melanie Ray, do we wanna change the system, do we wanna do something like that, is that?
That would fall into maintain fiscal responsibility, that wouldn't count.
I, you know, that's true, it would save us money, would that be a fiscal responsibility thing?
I think that'd be.
Okay.
I think that'd be an appropriate time, I mean, and, and if that's something that you want to investigate that doesn't kinda fall within the goals and objectives, then obviously directly to do whatever.
Okay.
But, uh, it, it would be a, maybe a short-term gain, short-term win on the, on the fiscal responsibility side of the set as a goal.
Or on an odd year election cycle that actually costs us more because we're not having elections at the same time that a lot of other.
Just their other state.
We go on October instead of November.
Got it.
So there's other realities.
So there's additional costs, election due, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct.
Be coming around during election time when you lost wishing you had an October election. Just throwing that out there when eighteen people.
Then you don't have to worry.
When you have eighteen people.
Right, with eighteen people, I mean, that, I mean.
First elected got twelve percent of the vote.
Right, so I mean, I understand having it and I understand.
I would be so excited to see eighteen people show up.
Me too, because then that means we're getting the community to, to do stuff, but, I mean, realistically in how they, we operate here, that, you know, I, to me, I feel like a little bit it's a necessity, um, but, you know, I'll tell you in four, three years when I run it again, if I got eighteen people.
When I come back in four years to do your next strategic session.
Yeah.
I'll tell y'all what it is, 'cause I ain't running again. That's what I can say, anything I wanna say.
All right, so we've got six goals.
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Now, I know we have to provide the public safety through fire police and all that and when it comes through to the employees for is safety, so I'm quite sure they'll be, they'll fall up under the develop, train and retain qualified staff?
Mm-hmm, yeah, against each of the departments within the city, yeah, so that would include fire police, et cetera, which are.
Well, the reason I said that, I'm saying that from a point of view of, I can remember when I worked in the tax department, we had I read customers come in all, all the time, so staff needed to be trained how to handle those types of situations, so I guess.
That would be in the number one.
Okay, I just wanna make sure. That'd be a topic.
We actually do the, I think I'd be recommended office.
Oh, okay, good, exactly, that office as well.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's being done there.
Okay, okay.
All right. Six things, feeling good?
Feeling good.
Feels like the right time to take a ten-minute break? All right, so we'll get back in our spots, everybody. He's trying to fool me. You're not Alderman Astor, I'm wrong to you, no.
Well, we did grow up together.
Good, well, first off, thank you for being back on time, uh, that's always a good accomplishment, so I mean, you're anxious to get into the next set of goals here, so as we left just to recap, we got into the six goals, so now we're gonna get into a little bit harder stuff, we're gonna take those six goals and we're gonna take each one of them and go into objectives for each goal. Now, we took the liberty to pre-fill some of those objectives, maybe did a little bit of word smithing to kinda match a more traditional objective, everybody know the difference between a goal and objective?
Yes.
All right, what do you think it is?
Give us the definition. Um, a goal is what you're setting, the objective, objective is how you're gonna execute it? Oh, yeah, I was straight out of college.
Kinda getting back to the why, all that money you spent in college, look at, paid off.
I'm still in college, so.
Oh, okay.
Broke too.
We get money.
I'm just making sure that.
So give Chrissy just a second, so she's aligning the six to match the wording that we just left the last session, so we'll have those six lined up to match the wording you kind of generally liked, I won't say approved yet because that's coming in another session. And she's got what, one more to do?
I'm going with the one today, so I'll save a little bit for her.
Will you be able to email it, update it later?
Of course.
No, that's a secret. All right, any strong preference, we don't have to go at the top, who wants to start? Give me one to start with. Pick one, there's six of them, somebody pick one, who's first? I'm gonna call on somebody if someone doesn't raise their hand.
Now, I, I will preface that we, Chrissy and I sat down, um, actually this morning and tried to start thinking through, you know, if these stay there, what some of the objective type things would be. Now, we're not saying you gotta go with these, we were just trying to give some mindset as to the difference between, you know, goals and objectives underneath that goal to obtain what you need to, and some of these may be applicable, some of them may, you may not be interested in and we're perfectly fine with that, but what we wanted to do was try to start thinking through, what are some of the goals we could set to accomplish what you may have developed here as an acceptable goal for the next four years? So case in point, let's think about number one, we, obviously I mentioned to you, execute the salary study recommendations in order to ensure positions are competitive related to our market and the market drives oftentimes whether or not we're able to retain and keep those staff.
You know what we really forgot in this, the word hire, because we do have an abatement officer leaving, we have places in our electric department, shouldn't hire be in there and what the method of hiring is? Could that not be a word that should be added rather than develop, it should be hire because we have so many holes?
Maybe develop and train could be summed up into one word, train's probably fine and then maybe recruit should, instead of being develop. So recruit, train and retain qualified staff.
Okay. Okay, you understand what?
I understand. Everyone agree with that change?
Yes, yes.
Yes, move on, all right, keep going, all right.
All right, and then, so obviously, uh, underneath that, you know, develop a plan for salary adjustments to keep patient cost of living increases, one of the things that we see on a regular basis is, um, you know, oftentimes, and it, it's obviously market driven, uh, but you can come up with ideas of, do you put together a, a salary adjustment schedule that may relate to CPI, you see some companies that do that, you see some of. You see some companies that do that, um, you see some of the companies that, and that's cost of living only. Because what we've run into is, over the past five years, the market on the positions that we have have changed. Uh, we saw it in the police department, we've seen it in some of the other, especially the electrical field. Uh, just kinda, I wanna give y'all an idea, you brought up the electric several times. Recruiting and maintaining and keeping some electric staff is not easy, okay? Um, just to kind of give you an idea, I went to the Nekempa meeting, um, la- last week I was there, last week. I took a picture of it and I'll, I'll be glad, happy to forward it to you. This is how competitive it's getting. Uh, the city of Wilson's operation, Public Works' operation facility is where they have those meetings, uh, Alderman Harris, he went with me. Their lower main entrance, we didn't come in this entrance, but their lower main entrance, as soon as you exit there, they have a billboard that a private contractor has put up there that says, hiring electrical line workers, and I'm not gonna say how much it is, but it's a lot, it's, well, I will say, it's forty dollars an hour, up to forty dollars an hour, with a hundred dollar a day per diem in Richmond, Virginia. So, they are literally trying to steal outside of Public Works Commission, or the Public Works Office of Wilson, the staff members that they have to come up to Virginia and work.
Wow.
So, and the reason that's happening is, is because the electrical field has become so slim in numbers as far as the employees and people that are available. Uh, so that's the kind of stuff we're running into, and that's the things that we've got to start thinking through, because it got brought up in our meeting.
But that's where you have a program and a plan and, you know, you put some thought process to it. I could say the same thing in the world of restaurants, everybody steals everybody's employees, you have a big server, you know, they move, or kitchen worker cook, 'cause we're so limited. But you try to create, um, an environment where people say, maybe due to the hours, whatever it is, the, the working environment, you know, or benefits or whatever that they get from it makes it better, so, a forty dollar an hour, it looks good, but, my family lives here, this is a great group of people to work with, I feel great when I go to my job, that sometimes.
And you gotta go deeper than that too, you gotta go all the way into the high schools and start recruiting kids to come through the high school ranks saying, hey, what? You know, you can earn a pretty damn good living being an electrical line worker with the city of New Bern and start them there, because they're being told that they need to go to college, and there's a lot of trade positions right now, HVAC, air conditioning, all that stuff, we're seeing at the C one A level in discussions with that, that there, people are just clamoring for, so we've got to do what we can to.
But the city of New Bern, forty years ago, and Dana, you would know this, is that, that's who they were hired. Kids came out of high school and they went to work for the city of New Bern, right, and stayed here thirty-five to forty years. So, if, I don't know what we're, I guess what changed in the midst of college, but.
See, I, I remember the, the apprentice program that the city of New Bern used to have. You know, where they hired kids out of high school, an apprentice program.
You know, the education aspect, I know we brought it up at a board meeting, you know, where the, you know, you have summer programs where they can intern, and they can see what they, what their life would be like if they had this job, so it's more, you know, that interaction. Yeah, the outreach, which is, you know.
So, lead, reading these objectives that, that are written, I don't see that. And, and the apprentice, the outreach, the going to the trades, the high school students, so if we can maybe just, you don't have to wordsmith it in there, but I see, let's just put a note there so we, the staff can maybe write that out a little better.
It, it is changing, it is, I'm sorry, it is changing a little bit. The high school here now offers a firefighting class. And when, when the kids graduate, they're basically certified firefighters, with the exception of one class that they can't get during the school. And the same thing, like, well, we'll soon be offering, or the community college will soon be offering these trades, which, and the workforce training is there, right? That we'll do electricians and stuff? Maybe we'll, we don't have that on that.
You gotta be able to entice, you know, we need to just be building that relationship with the county, 'cause county schools and getting in there when they have their career days and stuff like that, you know, we work, we're busy doing what we do, but making sure we take time to, you know, tell the kids what we do, or, you know, they go around to the departments and stuff, you know, 'cause that's a way to, um, generate, you know, possible, you know.
We're actually pretty good at that. We go to the schools during career day, a lot of the city staff does.
To read.
No, no, we go to during career day to explain what it's like to be a fireman, or what it's like to be a police officer, and that kind of stuff.
Do all the department heads do that?
Well, yeah. I know police and fire and, I don't know if electric ever did or not, but I know police and fire do, 'cause we're always side by side.
Yeah, so, back to the question about goals, I don't know if anyone ever heard of the SMART goals? SMART, specific, measurable, achievable, relevant in time now. So, when we start thinking about these objectives, we need to start thinking about something that's very specific, like recruitment. I'm just picking on that one, the one about partnering with the school system, blah, blah, blah. Is it measurable? Not yet, so how do we start making that measurable? We might say, uh, once a year, once a quarter, uh, something to that effect, so we have a measurement, right? But we're gonna do five, you know, go to five career days, or eighty percent of the departments in the city of New Bern will participate in career day. Or something, give some kind of measurable objective that we can actually go back to Mark and hold him and his team accountable for, right?
Well, there's a difference on going speaking at career day and having a, a summer program where the kids actually get to follow and see what you do. A lot of children are tangible, that, you know, they're hands-on, they don't like to listen, 'cause I taught at HJ and they were excited that I actually did something with them, instead of spend thirty minutes talking to them, so, you know, develop some sort of, you know, summer intern program for, you know, high school kids, whatever age, to, you know, generate, you know, the idea of wanting to work for the city.
Mark, do we not currently have a merit-based salary program, um, when I left?
We've got enough money to do it.
We do, we don't.
I said, if we've got enough money to do it.
It's budget year to budget year.
Budget year to budget year.
Whether we can afford it.
Yep. I, I would say that, personally, I'm completely against. I don't think you reward people with cost of living increases.
I'm with you on that too, Jeff, in the real world, that doesn't happen.
No, absolutely not, if you have a mediocre employee that's not meeting objectives, they don't get a two percent because CPI inflated.
Exactly.
They should be.
That's why I thought that merit-based one was really looked at, if you met certain goals and objectives of your department.
So, hang on, we've got two board members that feel strongly about that topic.
My, I don't know, I don't know what you wanna call it, but I, I've talked to employees that's had two percent in four years. You know, and, and they, we, we talk, we talk about, every, everybody in here talks about their, their ward has drainage issues. And that, our drainage guys that are responsible for doing that, some of them just, it's been, you know, they haven't had the, the the salary increases, um, that, that they think they, they deserve, you know? But, but two percent, two percent over a three or four-year period of time is, is, is not a good way of keeping employees.
It just depends, it depends what you're looking at, if you do the market study. That was the whole idea in doing the market study. If the market study says that drain workers, let's just say, are anywhere from thirty to forty thousand dollars, then they should be in that range, and then as they meet the goals and do something, they rise up through the ranks, and when they get to forty, that's all the job pays, it doesn't pay anymore.
It's right, so.
So, they shouldn't keep giving you two percent, two percent, two percent, 'cause then what happens is you have employees that come in here and a job should only pay eighty thousand, and they were making a hundred and twenty thousand, 'cause they've been here for thirty years.
I doubt, I doubt that that's a problem, is that a problem?
It was a problem. Correct. Was it not a problem?
Current.
Not currently, it is.
Currently, it's not a problem.
No, 'cause it was adjusted.
Well, I believe that people need to be making what it's, you know, they, they need to be in that field, so, obviously.
That's the market study.
Yeah, that's what, right.
So, just some, just some food for thought, one of the reasons I think the city historically has had to do these market studies every five to six years is because, um, we don't, we don't slide our bands with the market, which would be kind of a, a cost of living adjustment that other cities intentionally or unintentionally are making to get their, their pay bands in line with what it kind of costs to live and what they should be making. And so what we find is, these salary studies are asking us to kind of slide pay bands or slide, uh, positions from one pay band to another because they should be making more, if we kept up with it, as cost of living goes up, you kind of slide your whole pay scale with it, and then you probably don't have to do these salary studies every five to six years.
What you do, how you get that, is by the merits.
It's just another way of looking at it.
As they achieve the goals and the objectives of the department, they're getting that sliding scale and they're increasing in the rate.
I'm talking about the range though, you don't.
It's a little bit different because.
The range doesn't move.
Five years, five years, ten years from now.
And that causes stagnation.
Ten years from now, uh, you know, the high end of a custodian position is not gonna be thirty thousand dollars, it's gonna be thirty-five thousand dollars. That's what she's kind of getting at.
It's, it's not the individual employee within the band, it's that the band for a custodian doesn't move unless we move it. And we typically move it relative to what market slash inflation slash cost of living is doing, or that's what we should be doing. Otherwise, we have to do these salary studies every couple of years that then tell us a custodian band should be not here, but here.
It should be a eight, it should be a ten, not an eight. So, so what I'm hearing a couple of board members say, and I don't wanna speak for all the board, but I heard is, it's this cost of living increases versus a market study. And, and so would the board prefer a cost of living increase across the board for employees? Or would you prefer that to be more like a market study that then sets those bands every two to five years, whatever the time or.
Does it cost us to do a market study?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
Oh, okay, well, yeah.
I don't know, how much does a market study cost, when, or you?
I was gonna say thirty-five to forty thousand.
And that's always to give people a cost of living raises.
Uh, Chris, I don't, again, speaking for myself, I didn't say I didn't like cost of living in lieu of a market study. I don't think you need to give a cost of living increase each year, it should be merit-based. So, if you have a successful employee and your average cost of living would have been two percent, then it's a two percent successful rating. However, if somebody's unsuccessful or marginal, they don't get anything. And then that extra percent then goes to somebody who is overachieving and they get more. So, it's not a general cost, when I hear cost of living increase, I think everybody, every employee is two percent just because you're an employee and the cost of living went up. Uh, that's what I disagree with. Issue with it though is, you either have to do one or the other, you either do cost, what, what Chrissy was talking about is correct. If you look at the cost of living adjustments, it, what they should technically do is move the band. Because five years from now, the entry level, let's say it's an entry level person, and I don't understand the exact question, 'cause I believe merit pay, merit-based pay as well. But five years from now, the entry level fireman will make more, or is probably supposed to make more, than the entry level fireman right now. Or five or ten years. The only way you do that is either through a market study, or you move the bands over a period of time at a certain percentage so that you're staying applicable to what the market demands.
Well, that's been, that's been an issue the whole time with this, even when we had steps, grades and steps. When you got a cost of living raise, that grade and step and everything should move the amount of that cost of living. Again, not doing that creates a major problem called stacking, and stacking is a, is a big problem with some of our employees today.
So, is the, but the, what I think I'm hearing you say is, it's not a salary adjustment for each employee, it's a salary adjustment to the bands. So, I think if you're comfortable with a cost of living adjustment to the bands, not the individual employee, but the group employee.
I'm not comfortable rewarding any employee that's not achieving their.
Forget the, we're not talking about individual employees, okay? Let's, let's step up, step higher. The bands that manage employees need to be adjusted, either through a market study or through, uh, cost of living adjustment.
Well, if you do.
The bands, not the individual employee, for the bands.
Administratively, what happens is, is if you, and I, what he's talking about is, is basically, in a sense, you're talking, you're talking about bands, moving the band. Because what happens is, is five years from now, just like we just had to go through this year, we have to do a market study, and it establishes that certain positions are way below where they need to be. So, now we're having to take a custodian that wasn't an eight position, or, and I'm just using that as, or a fireman that was a ten position, and move them up to a twelve position, because the market is driving what their minimum salary is. So, then what happens is, is you have this large sum of money, and we ran through it whenever, uh, Mike was here, we had to give people six percent raises for two or three years in a row to get them up to where the, the base pay for the market.
But you couldn't give anything to the guys that are the, the people, the employees at the upper end, they got nothing.
Well, and that's because.
'Cause they were above the band. They were above the band.
Well, they got a bonus, I think, at some point.
Right, well, the thing about, at some point, we have to, um, you know, equal out where we are with, you know, cost of living, because that's realistic. Things are gonna change, and instead of sitting here every two, three, four years, having someone come survey to tell us that we're not, you know, being, um, you know.
Competitive.
Could our HR department not do that? Could our HR department not do a ser- not do a survey and study it, why not?
Well, if you do, if you move the bands, you really don't have to do the, the survey.
Well, I think the answer, I, I'll, I'll argue for you guys, I think the answer is both. You need to do a cost of, you need to do some kind of cost of living adjustment for the bands, not people, not the individual employee. That's a whole nother discussion, which I think we need to have. But you need to adjust the bands to keep up with the market, which is cost of living, CPI is a typical index, so you could adjust the bands annually against CPI. But then you need to do a market study probably every three to five years and pay the thirty-five thousand dollars, 'cause what, your bands are gonna get out of sync. 'Cause not every job raises exactly the same in the bands, right? So, then you gotta readjust, the question is, you're gonna take money away from people. So, what happens when the custodial job actually goes down and it's not worth as much as it used to be? And there are circum- circumstances where that might occur, I'm not gonna name one, but I have seen that. So, the question is, um, how are you gonna deal with that? And what direction do you wanna provide staff as it relates to banding? I don't think, in my experience, we don't necessarily need a board administering, um, payments to individual employees. You need to provide a framework for the management team to distribute the money and give them some guidance. We want, you, you said, we want certain employees that perform well to get paid more, and we want those that don't perform as well not to get adjustments. That's a direction the board can provide to management, and then management manages that process with the individual employees, 'cause we're, we're too far away from it, right? You don't know the details of individual employee, and that's up to the manager of that employee, and then you hold him accountable for it.
When you adjust the band, that affects the individuals that work in those departments, correct?
It could, yeah.
If, it says we need to be paying them fifty-five thousand dollars and they're only making forty-five, then all of those employees that are not making that have to be raised to that amount?
Not necessarily, that's management discretion. If management thinks that, that, if the pay band is forty-five to fifty-five, which usually their ranges, if, if the employee's in forty-five, they're in the lowest part of the band, and management doesn't think they've worked to the level to achieve a increase, they may not get an increase. Whereas someone making fifty is a high performer and management may decide to take them to fifty-two. And that, that's where you gotta leave the management discretion, I think, in, in administering payroll.
And I think the argument.
It's really difficult for people like Jeff and I, who are in that real world of business and, and we're, we're having to pay employees and look at it. And sometimes I can, you know, a ten-dollar hour employee, let's just use that, they have just above and beyond exceeded, and they're just, and I have no problem, you know, I say, hey, I'd rather pay you fifteen and know you're gonna stay here, whatever, you have that flexibility of doing that. But then when you have dead weight, who, you keep reviewing them, and there's no efficiency in what they're doing, you don't give them raises, and then finally, they go off, because they, they think they want more money.
Then that's a problem that we need to address with our department heads and staff.
Me as a department head, if I have problems like that, I develop a work plan, and if they don't, if they don't appease to my work plan, then they're out.
Everybody should be at a certain standard, but, I mean.
That's the way I do it.
But if you give everybody the cola, there's no incentive to do better. Because you know you're gonna get that one percent, two percent, or whatever it is every year, and there's no incentive. Sometimes, people are motivated by money, some people, not everybody, but, but for the people who are motivated by money, you know, money talks.
Well, I'll argue as a private sector person who's worked in government sector.
It's hard.
Government employees are typically not money motivated, they're service-oriented, they, they serve the people. How do you think you pay a policeman thirty-five thousand dollars to put their life on the line? It's not money, it's because of the public service, so I would argue that you can't.
And benefits, and benefits. You get benefits, but better benefits on the government side than you do in the private sector side, in most cases, in most cases.
Yes.
Most people who come to me for a job say, can you get me into the city or the county, 'cause I need benefits.
That's when I turn them around and send them away.
And you send them to me.
Don't come to me looking at God, 'cause you need help to turn.
Right.
But at the end of the day, most of your public servants are true servants.
No doubt about it.
There are exceptions to that, right? As in every career path, there are exceptions, but most of them are public servants. So, it, I guess my point is, you're not gonna dangle a two percent raise to get someone to go from here to here on the performance scale. It's just not gonna move them, right? What's gonna move them is the fact that they get to provide some service that they're passionate about to the public. That's my experience in working in public service. And that's my experience in working in public service.
It, it's just, it's just hard sometimes when you have an employee that's been in the same department doing a very good job, he's been there eighteen years, and he's out there leading the group and he gets a one percent raise and the guy that's just been here, you know, two years or three years, gets a four percent raise. You know, and might not necessarily be doing the, as good of a job. That is, so maybe education is part of it, but that is hard to explain to some employees.
Part of it, Chris, on number C there, is the way that we, with the way that the city has historically done those merit based salary adjustments, is they basically, as you get further in the band, they slow you down. So, you know, to get to the top of the band, they'll just start slowing you down and give you less and less of a percent. Whether that's the right way to do it or not, I'm, you know.
That's, that's the wrong way to do it, in my opinion.
It's up for discussion. So under number C, we could potentially do a different merit based plan than we do now, as a possibility.
So what I'm hearing from the board members is, yes, they want you to revisit that, I think. Am I, I see some head nods? Is that what you're asking?
Well, I think it's an issue.
I think that's what you're saying there, develop a plan.
I'm an advocate of COLA, so you can put that back on the list, we can keep discussing.
COLAs, COLAs.
I mean, I represent my ward and, you know, it's not to say that they're not capable of being all that they can be, but also it's based on a manager viewing whether you're to their standard or not, and they may be doing the best they can do. And taxes and everything go up and, you know, it's already hard to live. So having a, a, an increase, you know, across the board, I mean, that's just my view.
It's just never been, in, in my opinion, it's just never been fair. Barbara, I bet you, you, she remember this, I remember the time as being a department head sitting down years ago saying, um, we're going to give out merit increased raises and Bobby, you can give three percent to four people.
Well, what happens if I have five people that deserve it?
Right.
You know, so that's, and, and now we've gone to the senior man that typically everybody looks at for guidance. He's the first one usually you call on during an emergency because he's the one that has the experience. He gets a one percent raise and the guy that's been here for two years gets a four percent raise.
Well, that should be left up to that, uh, department head.
But that's not the way.
No, I mean, that should be left up to that department head to give that person, like you're saying, an additional raise.
But he can't, because.
What's limiting it? Why can't?
Why?
Mark, what's limiting it?
No, it's not budget. That's, that's the way, that's the way, listen, period, I mean.
Was there, there was, it sounds like there was some guidance provided by management to the department manager to pay this way.
Oh, you just said the man, the backwards, I've never heard of that merit type of payment. But I mean, I, I just re, I say retired and I worked at my job for three and a half years and I was great at what I did. And you know how much I got? One year was three cents. So I understand, uh, uh, you know, a citizen out there that's, you know, working and the merit sometimes is still garbage. And to have us, you know, the, this cost of living raise to be.
When is, when is enough not enough? Or, you know, when is it not enough? I mean, when is it too much? You know, you, you do it and do it and do it and then you get to the point of, then that means no chess, chess game for you, or it means no sewer for over here at some point. It's got to be part of the overall plan. You have to have good employees, you have to pay them. That's important part of, of running any business or doing anything is that you have well-paid employees.
So that they can come into the communities, keep their homes up, purchase homes.
Exactly.
Work there, spend their money there and be, you know, having a well-paid employee is going to generate, you know, qualistically across the whole board on anything.
It's just not fair that I'm going to be penalizing an employee with twenty-two years' experience to give him a one percent raise just because he's been there twenty-two years.
I understand.
And then the next guy, the next guy's getting the other raises, and not for long. Then you've got him coming to and say, I've been here twenty years, this guy's been here ten years and I'm making five percent more than him. That's not fair.
Less, you mean, less?
No, more, five percent more.
You mean the guy that was here ten years?
Is it possible to search out, do we still have our benchmark cities? We used to have, you know, Elizabeth City, Kinston, maybe our benchmark cities.
Twenty-five percent of our employees last year.
Is it possible to reach out to them and see what kind of, if they have a merit base, what they normally do, just to get a, a viewpoint of what they're doing? And maybe, you know, we don't have to recreate the wheel, we can find some other program that may be successful and get an idea for it. Wouldn't that be a way to look at it?
To, to put the conversation in context, JR, what would one percent of a salary increase be for our, our workforce?
One percent would be about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Wow, that's bare minimum.
I'm sorry, that's just general fund, my apologies. General, general fund would want to be a hundred and thirty thousand.
And that's base salary, then you add on another two percent for benefit.
Do you understand what I'm saying about the seniority?
I, I think, and yeah, and we deal with it too. I mean, I, it's right, it's, it's a known fact in the corporate world, you get paid more if you jump around from organization to organization. Because you get almost penalized for being loyal to your employer. And I think you experience that everywhere. But I think one way that you could fix that is to give department heads a dollar amount and then say, you have this dollar amount to disperse up amongst your employees how you see fit.
Well, that's, that's not, that's what I just said two minutes ago, that I didn't think was fair. Because, again, I've got, I've got five employees that need a raise, but I only have enough money for three. Who do I give it to?
No, but if you, if you have five employees, you need to divide that money up.
You have to figure out how.
You divide it by five instead of three.
I think if we agree that we need a merit based performance program for our employees, I think we can go do the research of other cities. I have some experience on the federal side with how they tried to implement one and whether, you know, I, I think we can come with a proposal. I don't know that we'll solve it today.
Oh, I agree with you.
Now, the, the merit versus cost of living initiative as a goal is probably something, Chris, we still need to.
Right.
When the guys in, in Craven County get a two percent cost of living raise last year plus a two and a half percent merit increase, the guys in the city are saying, oh, man, look at that, you know, why can't we get some of that? You know?
All good comments.
Now, is the merit given out every year?
Depends on.
Depends on budget.
Well, one, year before last, they were not, no merit raises.
There was one last year.
How much was it?
I got them right here.
Two, two and a half, whatever it was.
And what about the.
Twenty-five percent of our employees that sleep one and a half percent or less.
So they have been getting merit raises, you know, the exceptional employees?
Two years ago, it was a one percent cost of living adjustment, right?
No.
Yes.
And then last year, it was the merit based system, it's that sliding scale that's either one percent to two and a half percent depending on where you are. But you had to meet performance requirements to get it.
But the problem with that is, a year prior to that, there was zero raises given, correct?
Pretty sure, yeah.
Yeah. So that's the reason why I said, I know, I've taught the employees this had two percent in three or four, you know, three or four years time frame. But we're not going to resolve that right here.
No.
It's an issue that we need to talk about.
So back to kind of directionally, don't worry about the words here, because staff will work on the wording and have you all kind of word submit it too. But we've got, kind of scroll back down just a second. So we've got things around the positions, compared others, groups, get this merit versus cost of living, salary adjustments against a market demand, right? So, um, is this one duplicated to this one or is it?
Yeah, they both are. The CDs.
B and B. Um, there's a.
That would kind of be under D.
Yeah, I think it'd be under D. There you go, for now.
First, the I. That's it, we got it.
And F is probably some kind of subset of E.
Yeah. Yes, we want to create an objective around recruitment, F would be a subset, or F.
Yeah, the, the reason you're doing this is to bring in recruits, so, yeah, that would be like that, I think. What, directionally, this includes the things you guys commented on just now and the things that you submitted earlier. Is there something on there that related to recruit, train qualified staff across all the firms? Is there anything? If, if staff did all this and wrote some really nice objectives and achieved these against some venerable SMART goals, which we're not going to write those today, that's kind of a homework assignment for staff. Would that, where's the one?
It's the E, right there.
I'm just going to ask you first.
Okay, all right. So that's some of the specific issues that was listed by.
Okay, I don't see anything on the last one about healthcare, so what, who, who commented on that? Anybody want to raise their hand about what they meant by healthcare? Because that's not on the other page.
I'd like to see that re-brought up and, and looked at a little closer, um, to reevaluate that.
Okay, let's add a F for now, some kind of healthcare. And what are you?
What, what are, what are we looking at?
If you have six, if you have one man in a family of six that wants to go to the doctor and he's making twenty-five thousand dollars a year, his deductible is six hundred dollars, he can't go. He's not going to go get treated.
Are we competitive with our prices, basically?
Is the healthcare program competitive with other cities? And that may be part of your benchmark.
That's realistic, you know, people love to see who can offer the best.
How long is it, I mean, can we not go out and, and, are we thinking about, or have we thought about going out and bids for healthcare yet?
Already done.
We're doing it now?
We just did it.
Well then, has the results in yet?
I mean, we have, listen, there's, there's several different ways in which you can provide health insurance to your employees. The way we have is to try to, try to reduce what the deductibles are as much as possible. Now, you can do a copay program, but ultimately, you've got to think of this thing from a holistic picture. One way or the other, somebody's got to pay for the health insurance.
Sure.
So either the entire bill is paid for the government, or you have some employee buy-in on what they pay. Now, I will tell you, six hundred dollars deductible is what our employees have, is unheard of in industry. Unheard of. Now, the, the problem, and I think.
Six thousand, right?
What?
My wife just had surgery and her deductible's six thousand dollars.
Ours is six, ours is, ours is six hundred you have to pay upfront, but then we have, you know, we have, we have copays that go beyond that. But our, our, our health insurance is really, really good.
Yeah, six hundred dollars deductible, that's pretty good.
I, I don't know as if it's the, what Johnny.
I think what Johnny.
It's the seventy-thirty, I think that's more the issue Johnny's.
Seventy-thirty is still consistent with what the market is, is demanding. Now, what you, what some places do, the state of North Carolina, you can do an eighty-twenty plan, but you have to pay for it. You have to pay for it. And then, so what we have is a very low out-of-pocket deductible and out-of-pocket maximums to try to protect our employees. I understand what you're talking about. Our problem is, is that that six hundred has to be paid upfront. So if I have a flu and I have to go and I get all these medications and all this other stuff, see these doctor, have tests done, all this other stuff, and it costs me seven hundred dollars, I have to pay six hundred of that out-of-pocket on the first trip. Instead of a twenty-five dollar copay and then you pay matches, eighty-twenty or seventy-thirty or whatever, that's the difference. But the maximum out-of-pocket for that individual is six hundred dollars. Well, not necessarily.
No.
The deductible's six hundred dollars, the out-of-pocket maximum is like eighteen hundred.
So for the next, next visit, they're not paying anything?
That would be, that's correct.
They're paying thirty percent or whatever.
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent.
But that goes back to standard of living and making sure they're making enough money to be able to cover the out-of-pocket expenses.
I, I will tell you that every time we get out our health insurance, they, they literally come in and they try to get us to adjust the, the, the health insurance stuff. And, and, you know, we have on multiple occasions, but, I mean, when I came here, our deductible was two hundred dollars, seven years ago.
So I think your healthcare, the line item here for healthcare is it needs to be part of this market study, right? Because it's, it's part of the packet, the benefits package employees receive. So you need to make sure that entire benefits package, not just their salary, but their healthcare, retirement, et cetera, is competitive with the places you compete against.
Right.
That's how you're going to attract and retain employees, is to have a competitive benefits.
And we'll find it is.
I, I can tell you, you will find that we are way lower than anybody else.
And great.
As far as our.
Yeah, and that's how you justify why you're not paying as much salary, because you have a much better healthcare program, right?
That's true.
So when they go to take that job to another city, you say, wait a minute, before you go to another job, you need to know that our healthcare is this much better.
You don't mean the hell being still most of the time.
Well, maybe, maybe you need to change your healthcare, like all the other cities.
In, in twenty years from now, people will come back and say, man, I wish I hadn't have done that. But right now, the only thing, most of them, a lot of the concern is the.
The salary.
The salaries.
Yeah, I think this, the healthcare, and, and again, we're talking about a four-year time horizon for this strategic plan. So even though you just redid your healthcare for this next year, in two years from now, you need to revisit. So staff needs to have it on the radar.
So we're still self-funded, Mark?
Yes.
And it wouldn't be, and that's still the best way to cross the gap?
Absolutely, we haven't bid that out too, absolutely not.
Is it county?
They went back to self-funded. The county was self-funded, they went to, I think, a state program and then they gone back to self-funded.
I, really stupid question, non-insured, it's legal or not. But if the city and the county employees went together as.
Can't do that, I thought about that too.
Okay, we can't have one insurance company.
Now, what you can do is you, the League of Municipalities owns a, a market that you can actually, and, and the state actually allows you to get into their program now, but you're going to pay whatever applicable costs are. I mean, I don't know that it's any better, we hadn't studied that, didn't we? It was joined on the state system. So it's, it's not any better for us.
We're in, the, the number of employees we have, we're in kind of a sweet spot where self-funded is the best way to go. If you get a huge number of employees, then the market can be competitive. And if you have less, then you would join something like the League of Municipalities, kind of, they grouped an insurance plan for small municipalities. We're right in that self-funded wheelhouse as far as the rate.
The most beneficial thing that you can do with regards to health insurance and cost, reduce whatever your costs are with the municipality, is to push health promotion programs and health awareness programs and.
Diabetes.
Diabetes programs, I mean, we, you know, we, our, you wouldn't, our tremendous cost on diabetes, uh, because of the, the, the prescriptions and so forth and so on. So what we've really got to do is, is push health awareness rather than, and, and prevention rather than treatment. And that's the way you actually reduce what your costs are.
Which that should probably be in there. Will the subset of that help?
Yes.
Which I, I know you're going to go work on that later, but just, that's a great point.
And to some point, we're actually doing that. Because we, I have.
Yeah, you go on your physical.
I have the lady to call me monthly.
That's what my husband does with my husband.
Yeah, we are, pursuing those pretty hard.
And then, you know, what they've added now at some places, like if you're a smoker, you got to pay twenty-five dollars for all your health insurance because you smoke and you can't smoke on the facility.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
They do that too?
We even also looked at having a, a physician or nurse pharmacy onsite for employees, right? We're, we're looking at other alternatives as well and our consultant's been helping us with that.
Have you thought about calling North Carolina to see if you can partner with, with Brody School or something like that, because they're always looking for those partnerships? And I'm going to hook you up with, uh, Vice Chancellor Jay Golden. He's got their Rural Health Initiative and that may be a partnership there.
Mark, I know you're trying to type, but can you jump back to what they had submitted? I think that's how we found the healthcare, was there anything else missing from what they submitted? Raises, staff needs, how many employees each department has, whether they need more, I think it seems to be a field timeout. I think C is represented on that. So, can we jump back to the goals now at a G?
Back to B.
About staffing needs.
Let's make sure it's an initiative that the board-
Well, isn't it at the top, isn't it A?
Isn't that what we were talking about?
No, it's, it's included in A, isn't it?
I got the impression that it was more about, are we staffed properly in each of the departments? Do we have too many people?
Oh, okay.
Probably right size.
Are we right-sized?
Based on whose opinion on that?
Good question.
Cause like years ago, every department has one day they need more people. Right?
Well, if they get this list of goals from you guys, they might need more people. They might not. Well, I heard we're gonna have to hire five more, what do you call them, enforcement people?
Nuance made.
Nuance made.
He just retired.
Longly had retired.
Retired.
No wonder, no wonder the cities are building to look at.
And I'm still waiting on those ones.
Alright, so, right-sized staffing levels, is that something that the entire board thinks need to be reviewed? Or at least-
I, I think it needs to be reviewed, but I do agree with Jeff though too, because, I mean, I've worked in a place where we felt as workers, we need more people, but that doesn't mean we couldn't afford it or we were just being lazy. So, I mean, you, you know, you gotta get outsiders-
So, right-sized staff levels against some kind of benchmark?
Yes.
Just keep in mind, I always keep in mind, we're, you know, wants and needs, because of somewhere or another, go back to the very first thing I presented to y'all, which was revenues versus expense. Again, because a lot of this stuff up here is gonna have dollar signs along with it.
So, maybe each department has to review their department for efficiencies, you know, and, and look at that. And that, to me, that's what right, right size of staff is. And I think it's different in public safety, you know, because, you know, I mean, and we know about trying to man fire stations and police.
Just for the, the four new ones, you know, what, four years ago? Lori came in, directed me, find where we can cut expenses. And a majority of, a lot of that came through, you know, reducing staffing levels on positions that were set vacant for months and months and months. And, and then there were other efficiencies that we ran through. And this past budget season, I charged Chrissy with doing deep dives into the departments to try and find even more efficiencies so that we could-
Cut a lot.
Cut a lot out of our budget. And, and that charge was so that we could help reduce what our utility rates are. So, at some point or another, you know, the, the fat and the meat are down to the bone on what you could cut without starting to affect service delivery. And that's where we've got, but I, I just wanted to throw that history nugget out there.
But also, she, you, what, what Jeff said and what he put up there is the outsourcing. So, that may look at, I think it was you, Jeff, that put outsourcing on there. You know, it may be that outsourcing some of that creates some economic scale. In some places.
Well, in some cases, the downsizing and the, the lack of staffing has already created problems.
Yes.
Well, I, I would say this right-size, remember the words right size, not down size. So-
Well, we downsized years ago.
I know, but, but I can't fix what happened years ago. What we're doing is from the day forward, right? And so, from the day forward, we're gonna ask staff to go look and make sure the departments are staffed correctly, right? And so, for example, if there's been a big growth and we need to hire another fireman because there's too many people in this district against some kind of benchmark that says for every hundred thousand people, you should have X number of firemen. And, and we're ten percent down below that, then maybe they need to hire more firemen. Same for policemen, but trash collectors for janitor service, right? And that's what we want staff to go figure out. Are you right-sized against some kind of benchmark?
Right, yeah, I mean, I agree with that.
Right. And, and some credible benchmark, not just because they felt that way this morning, right? Back to the- Hold him, I'm sorry. So, are we feeling relatively good here? We got the stuff that was missing from the previous page. Is there anything else you wanna direct staff as it relates to setting some objectives in these categories on personnel? And it'll probably look a lot different than what you see on the board here. But in spirit, we've got kind of the themes that you want them to go write something that you can then react to. So, what's gonna happen is they're gonna take this back now, know that they've got some of your input, and they're gonna reword all this to kind of match this discussion and bring it back for your review. Right? Alright, so we only have five more to go. And we have one hour and fifteen minutes today. So, which one do you wanna tackle next?
We can move on to number three.
What's number three?
Parks and Recreation.
Alright, let's do it. We don't, there's no order. We're on to Parks and Recreation. So, does this, go back to the first page they submitted. Let's make sure, Parks and Recreation, these were the things that you submitted?
Life-size chess.
A life-size chessboard.
Park with life-size chess.
And I got it pulled up just in case you need to quote on how much one costs.
So, go back to the other, now we go back to the other screen now, I wanna-
Four hundred and sixty.
Go back to the other screen and I wanna base question back. Okay, so, create a regional park. Um, I don't, we, you know, we, I don't understand create because we've gotten the park.
Maybe develop.
Develop, I think maybe rather than create because the-
Technically, we have Martin Marietta Park, there's just nothing there.
Right, yeah. So, develop.
And it could have a human-sized chess thing in it, right?
No.
Yeah? Okay.
Mine is ward-specific.
A ward-specific human-sized chess thing?
Correct. Park in my, in my ward, I'm, I want that.
Cause nobody else's ward needs one.
I don't know what they need, but I know what my ward's been lacking. And so, since I'm here representing my ward, I know that they need-
Your ward is like, relying on that human-sized chess.
That's why they elected you guys in the fight for what you're looking for.
Human-sized chess for all wards.
I, I got a question, are the game pieces human beings or is it big game?
Life-sized pieces, but mine is about education because chess is strategic, is math, and you can offer that as a, as a program within Parks and Rec. So, you help underage or underprivileged kids about, you know, strategic strategies and math. So, mine is more than just beautifying the ward, you're educating the child. So, we, you know, you know.
Yeah, that was a, that was a community, I think it was in Chicago where they implemented in the schools a chess.
Right, and then, then-
So, this is one that you have, I remember I said there's gonna be a few that people have a lot of passion around. I think we found one. Okay, so that's good, thank you for bringing your passion to it. There's probably equally someone in the room, I won't look anywhere, that has the opposite passion for it, right? So, let's just know that. So, that said, how do we incorporate that into these? In the stack of, the will of the whole board to incorporate the stuff on the other page into these goals?
What, chess? How do we incorporate that in there? I mean, that's a budget item that the-
Yeah.
That the recreation director says, hey, I don't-
The objective would be probably to, as she's interested, to educate, to, to create an educational environment in the parks. That's maybe the objective.
But when you say ensure all current facilities and menus are safe, fully utilized and relevant, that would be relevant, so.
And it would be utilization of a space that isn't currently utilized or anything.
Yeah, I mean-
But it would also be diversify recreational opportunities.
Yeah, so maybe under, let's just stick it under here for a place marker. For the full board to decide on it. Full-size chess and diversify.
I think there's another.
Hey, you want, my opinion on Parks and Recreation is that we do not offer enough opportunities for children.
Absolutely.
We have one, and I, I was raised and born and raised here, so was Johnny Ray. And I, and maybe some others, I'm not sure. But, I remember when I was a kid, through the Craven, through the New Bern Parks and Recreation, they had the Pop Warner football teams and there were so many of them that, I mean, the kids were just all over the place practicing at the school yards and stuff like that. This year, we didn't even offer it, I don't think.
We did, we didn't have enough.
We, we also, because the only way it was advertised is a sign stuck out in front of the recreation.
So, that's advertising.
So, and, and our new Park Recreation Director is gonna take care of that, I'm sure.
So, maybe a cost issue, right? Cause-
No, 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 we've done it for, we've done it for a hundred years, I mean, you know.
But baseball is a very-
But, you know, the issue is that when, when football, when football season pops around, we had the old man, Mr. Hallwell, you remember him? I forgot, you were here.
And you're-
Mr. Hallwell sent his crews out into the schools and said, we're doing football, every one of you guys need to play. Here's the forms, take them home, get your mom and daddy sign them and meet, meet, and get them back here and we'll call you and let you know when they're gonna be. None of that happens now.
You know what, I thought my son played football, get his head bashed in. I sent him to Johnny Ray so he didn't have to play football. The training.
But it's not just football, it's not just football. Now, it needs to be, it needs to be city-run soccer, it needs to be city-run-
That's right.
Whatever, track. It needs to be city-operated, baseball, we don't even, we don't, we have, Mark, I think I know I'm talking about, and that's dangerous, you know? But I think we have three athletic directors on staff. And we operate one sport, is that not correct?
That's not quite correct.
Okay, close?
Well, we don't wanna call it anything, but we've got three of us over there.
So, is the staff right-sized for that?
No.
No.
But I think we need to give Foster because he's good.
I agree with that.
So, I don't know that it would be a, a thing because I want to give him a chance to get in there.
And I agree with that, I'm just saying-
Well, we gotta give him a benchmark.
Look, I think we have- We need to, we need to, that would be a place where we need to fund, extra funds to that because it's been so woefully underfunded.
I don't agree with that because I think, I think our interim Park and Recreation Director had to spend money or lose money this past year. On, on, not, not that it wasn't needed, but there was money funded for basketball courts that were never done. There was, and you know, and he, and that was-
That's what we're doing. Cause they look terrible when he has-
But they, and they were funded, weren't they, Mark? Were they not marked and just, I mean, were they not marked? Were they marked and not funded or what?
Pretty sure he moved our money down.
Okay, but, we've, we've got, I'm a firm believer that if a kid plays all day, he sleeps all night. Uh, we have, and, and to keep these kids from going to jail, it's, we've got to be involved in youth athletics.
Yes, sir. Bobby, I, I don't disagree with, kinda like we did with the Martin Marietta Park. We talked about what can we offer that we don't currently offer now. My concern with starting a soccer program is we've got Coastal United Soccer, it's already established at, at Creekside. If, if there's still a void there, then I'm certainly not opposed to that. But I don't think we need to go in and start stepping on toes if there's already something established from a football standpoint, there's the Craven Jaguars.
That's what I'm saying, they, I've been, they've approached me and they wanna be able to come on under the city or get funding. Because we did have a football team-
Right.
And on a budget that I saw previous year, it shows that money was budgeted out twelve, twelve hundred dollars for, um, you know, jerseys and stuff or equipment. And if we don't have a football team, where's the money going? So, we can, right, so it can be utilized to, you know, that team or maybe bring them under. But I know the stipulations, you know, Pop Warner and size, you know, how much you weigh, you can play type of thing. I know that they were, you know, they wouldn't be able to-
If I could add something on you, just to kinda touch on what you're saying, we, we need to look at partnerships. Excuse me. Uh, we've already talked, I, I already talked with the President of Coastal United and tried, got him in touch with Foster to see if we can develop some sort of partnership there. I mean, I'm facilitating, of course, not trying to step on toes because I'm friends with both, so, just trying to help each other out. But, you know, they, they just need to look at the partnerships, so like you said, you know, we've already got some of these things out there. If we can help facilitate that and then expand out from there what's missing.
I, I understand. But, let me get, and, and I agree with you. And I agree wholeheartedly with what Mr. Odom is, is saying over there. I just don't think that the city in the recent years has put their best foot forward when recruiting youth. And I, 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 I think a lot of people could agree with me on that.
So, I think-
There's so many opportunities, huh?
Wouldn't that be a goal?
Sure.
I think probably there's, there's really two issues. There's the management of the programs, which is advertising, getting the programs full, how we run them, are we doing that well? That's kinda Foster. And then there's what we offer and is that the right group of offerings to offer? And those are kinda two separate things. One, I would just kinda leave to Foster to, to run how we manage those because he's working really hard on that. The other would be, what do we offer and is it the right list of things for the city?
But I think the, the objective though, I think, what I'm hearing from the board is that they want, um, they want, they have a, an objective to enhance the athletic offerings.
Not just athletic, the overall, you can be at the forefront when it comes to Parks and Rec.
It has to do with athletic. Now, the question is how do you fund that and pay for it? And there might be, like was mentioned here, the public-private partnership kind of arrangement with the soccer club. They manage all the details, maybe the city makes the land available, right? The fields, cause that's a big issue.
Whatever.
The same thing with football, the Jack Wire thing could be part of the program where they manage it, the city just makes the fields available and coordinates which team gets to use which field. That alone is a logistics nightmare, having coached competitive soccer for a long time. So, just getting all the teams to use the right fields, cause the city owns all that land most likely, right? You have all these parks.
We do that with baseball, for example, we, we have the fields, they bring the, the organization and the teams to play.
See, I'm not, I don't think I get the impression that y'all wanna take a big chunk of your budget and redirect it towards funding youth sports.
Um, that's a possibility.
I don't wanna say, I don't wanna say that, I don't, a large portion, but I know-
I mean, I think we need to see, we need to see what our new Recreation Director is recommending, if he's got the funding. But I think, I, I think if we need additional funding, here we go with that word again. If we need additional funding to help get our youth involved in sports, I, I think that's it. I think, I think it'll pay for itself in the long run.
I would say recreational programs, yeah.
Yeah, whatever.
So, you wanna, wanna, an objective around youth involvement in recreation?
See, I think, I think a lot of, I think a lot that needs to be done is just, can be done by the staff. I mean, again-
What staff?
The Recreation Staff, my God, we got how many people? Hundred, thirty? We got thirty.
Three athletic people.
There's thirty, there's probably thirty on board, right?
We have three athletic directors, and what do they do?
They're not, there's an athletic group, there are three of them. And they run, well, they coordinate the programs we don't actually run, and then they run the programs we actually run. And Foster's working on it.
And, and I think the bottom line is that, we need to give Foster opportunity to-
Right, but you want, what's the, what's the message you want Foster to hear from you?
That Parks and Rec is a priority for the sport or for whoever in the sport, and we'd like that to be a, for him to come back with a budget. It's a priority, I say it's a priority.
Youth involvement in athletics.
You wanna write down of all the sports that we offer. But the sport, there's more than sports.
It's more than sports, but I would like to be able to get him like, okay, are we telling him, okay, you have three months to come back with something? I wanna give him a timeframe because that is important. I mean, that's what I ran with.
You're gonna hear about it in the budget now, I'm sure.
What do you want him to accomplish? We'll work on the timeline and bring that back to you.
My, my right here-
Youth involvement.
Right there, enhance, I, instead of athletic offerings, I would see, I would like to say enhance recreation offerings because that could be a variety of things. It could be arts, it could be-
If you wanna go down and add a one, the first one is a partnership for the Boys and Girls Club, you know, the after-school program.
All about that. The goal is diversify recreational opportunities.
Oh, I see, I know, I missed that.
We need that.
Well, we may include some senior unit programs too.
So, the board members, is this, is this what you're talking about, diversify recreational opportunities?
But, for me, for, if we're giving him, you said, tell him what we need, we need to work out a good situation.
I think try diversify and enhance. Right, I think that's what, enhance and diversify, diversify and enhance recreational opportunities. That's what you want the new director to come back and tell you how he's gonna do that, right?
Sure.
Is that, am I getting some head nods?
You're talking about B, right, not what A, B.
B, B, yeah. I think the word enhance is one that you had mentioned that, so.
And then come up with I and when you got greater youth, I see.
I think this is getting a little confusing down here because we're repeating some of the same stuff up here, we're editing in two places. Or you get back up to the B level for now with the board, if y'all can just focus on the high-level B. Is that close?
Diversify and enhance, is that what you, we were saying to add that word, and enhance?
Offered as an N.
And enhance recreational opportunities throughout the city of New Bern, so I guess that would include-
But I mean, that's essentially what the goal is, that's the whole goal is to enhance and diversify, and recreational opportunities.
No, we're saying, yeah, very good.
You're repeating yourself, I'm trying to figure out what objectives do you want to complete?
Right, and because we're doing a strategic plan specifically, we're giving him or whoever individual things that we would like him to do. And that would be full-size chess, enhanced athletic offering, something for the youth and partnership with Boys and Girls Club. Those are specifics that we want.
Can I add something else, Mark, that we're working on right now? Is the, is an art, a community art center?
Well, that's, I think you're right, Mark. B is competitive of the, of the region.
Is that anything?
Alright, so what is B? B is, needs to be wordsmith to represent some of the programs that they have some pattern. Program examples include full-size chess, athletic offerings, et cetera. I think that's a start.
You got a good word there.
Something along that line, yeah. You, you can work, we're not gonna try to wordsmith everyone of these today.
Oh, Parkings, just an S.
Athletics and, um-
Cause you said Parkings, I was just saying, program, programming and offerings.
Yeah, I would just delete athletics, cause athletics is a sub-police.
Put an S, yeah.
Operations.
Well, good, who would've ever thought we'd get into all that? That's some good stuff, y'all.
Alright, so, let's not get hung up on the As and Bs, those are only there to remind staff what you meant. And when they actually write Bs better, they'll try to incorporate your wishes in that, alright? So, the main thing is we wanna get three and A and B, C and D, right? Okay? These are meant for notes to remind staff how to word that.
So, so where do we put, well, the community center, the parks? Because I'm not asking for a recreation center, we don't have board for it.
Alright, first we've got, let's just check off, we got that one.
Yeah, yeah, there it is.
We get this one, home within our parks and recreational partner, partnership with P and G Club.
Yeah, so what, what?
Boys and Girls Club.
Oh, Boys and Girls Club, thank you.
And what we want that to be is a, a, a dash, or whatever, to, when we say a partnership, um, with the Boys and Girls Club to potentially locate in our Stanley White Recreation Center, and look at that, so we'd like that as.
That's a very detail, let's go back to the goal.
That's the reason why.
And I think we wanna do some public-private partnerships, is the objective? And the Boys Club is one example, with the Girls Club is one example. So investigating public-private partnerships with other entities.
That needs to be like a gold star.
Yeah, but we want it to be specific, I don't want it to be broad.
And I'm not trying to be a stickler, but for me, when I think of strategic planning, because we're gonna be here for hours, and you want us, and you tell us, you ask us what our visions are, I want you to know broken down exactly. So yes, you gather things together, but if I'm sitting here, I wanna see it typed up there that you understood and heard what I said on the outline and not just on the submitted issues by topic, so, I'm not, you know, I'm just saying, I want word for word what I'm wanting.
Right, so do a, Mark, do a, um, a sub-bullet under that, I E, Boys and Girls.
Then you can copy and paste what was already written, I just want it to be on the forefront.
But I want the same Boys and Girls Club, specifically, Stanley White.
Yeah, Stanley White, correct.
Uh, maybe the soccer example was given earlier, right, so it's not just that one, but, and then when they go back to work on this, they'll incorporate this into the, into their thinking.
Cause one of the things that ties into that is right sizing or being efficient, is that we have a after-school program at the Stanley White that has staff in it, but if the Boys and Girls Club came in there, they could have outsourced, and so therefore, our person would need to do that. And then that's a great partnership, what's happening after school and Foster, I asked Foster to look at that and to just kinda see what goes on.
Got it, it's on the board, what's the next, uh, let's go back to the other page real quick, Mark, make sure we captured. Uh, we got that one, Live, Live at Five at Union Park, who put that?
Live at Five, that was me too.
I've got that on there, we, we, we kinda lumped that into expand opportunities for cultural and arts offerings.
Or they make it specific.
That would be an amphitheater, potentially at the new park.
I mean, we could, all, listen, all these are specific, and, and they're all negotiable at this point, cause the board decides whether this is what you want. Right, because, I, I mean, there really needs to be.
But this is the time for us to be explaining to the rest of the board what we want, so that they know when it's, you know.
Back to where we just need to get them all into one document, and then the board can decide if they wanna do all of them. Cause I, you know what guys, you're gonna have too many things here, I, I mean, we all know that right now, right? We're, we're gonna type all this up and it's gonna come back and there's gonna be too much stuff here, you're not gonna be able to afford all this. So then you're gonna have to decide which ones you're gonna do and not.
Yeah, but they could be part of a five-year, ten-year plan, so they don't have to go away.
They may not fit in year one, they may fit in year three.
Exactly.
Right. Okay.
I think, I think what's missing from the whole discussion is what happened over in Kinston, the women in the world got together when I did with the Quiet Park and the Rotary, Rotary Club and City of Tans and others got involved in it.
Right.
Then that would've never happened, except they all partnered, and we've got to do that here in New Bern, and we're, we're not doing that.
I think that's what this C is, right? That, that's exactly what C is, you just had the Women's Club got together, right? That's a, they got together with the Rotary Club, the Women's Rotary Club, and they made some stuff happen for a swim park, is that what I just heard yourself say? That, that's that, that's C. So, who's reaching out to the Women's Rotary Group in New Bern saying?
That's a little bit, a little more in-depth than naming rights or something, is that physical plant building was put there by all these guys, um, partnering together to make it happen, and I don't really know how much city involvement was, was involved in that.
Well, um, another example would be Morehead City, their soccer field is Rotary Park, it's the name of it, it's a city field, but Rotary raised the funds and did all of that, and they call it Rotary Park. So there's examples across our region, and I'm sure across our state, where you've had civic organizations, like you've just mentioned, that have partnered to raise the funds necessary to offset what government can't necessarily do.
Only bringing it up because you're, you, you mentioned that all this has gotta be paid for, well, sure.
Right.
But, that's not, I mean, you're, you're dealing with chess, I don't think that's a real big expenditure. Some of those are not, but rock quarry and things like that are, but it's, you know, past time for the city to get together and come up with some type of model as to where we're gonna go, and partner as a city with these groups and make these things come to New Bern.
Maybe you'd sell the chess pieces as State Farm and Progressive.
Already on it, I already discussed that.
Right, and they, they plan to build the chess pieces, so you don't really take money out of your.
And, and that's the thing about this board that we have, is we have a diverse group where when we know, where, we, we are far ahead of the game, we're like, okay, is there a grant that we could possibly write to, to get this, like when you were talking about funding the fire station? So, it's good to get it liquid on a paper, and, and I believe that we have a good enough board where we're gonna be like, we're gonna make it happen, because we're gonna find the money somewhere where people are not gonna be sacrificing salaries and things like that, but still having it out there, expressing in our first board, coming together what we want, is really what's important to me and others on the board. So that's why I'm, you know, gunghoing a lot of stuff.
Alright. I'll back to the other one, Mark, I think we both got.
I don't, I don't really fully finish all of our best concerns.
Just let everybody express themselves and give it another time.
Go ahead.
Um, it's, are you finished?
Hmm.
You are?
Hmm.
Well, like I said, I'm not asking for a recreation center, cause I know there's two already, two here, we're asking for a community center. And the Pleasant Hill Community Association, they're writing grants to try to help fund this community center. We also want the city, and I've already talked with Foster about this community center, and we went a little in-depth. And the property where we want the community center to be located is already city-owned property, which was part of the initial plan when they first put the park there, that later on, the community center was gonna come, baseball field and a football field. We don't want that baseball field, football field, we want the community center, and we are gonna be funding some of this money. So, I just want, and, and within this community center, we want to have a food bank. We got some blighted areas that we know that this food bank would be a tremendous help for families. We want a after-school program there for some of the kids in that community and the surrounding, not just Pleasant Hill, we have, uh.
When you say we, who's we, to help?
Our community center.
But when you say we want, we want, who's we?
The Pleasant Hill Community Association.
Okay, the association.
Which are members of the Pleasant Hill community.
Got it, thank you.
And we want, we got tired of seeing our kids in the summertime out in the rain, the heat, where, with, with the summer day camp programs, uh, summer camp programs. So, we want to incorporate that, um, we want some programs set up for our youth. So, that's the reason why we want the community center, and again, like I said, this property is owned by the city, there's like six point some acres left where this center can, can be directed on, so that is what I want.
Cause I'm the new guiding, so everybody else may already know what you're talking about, but what I think you're asking for is this private entity would like to partner with the city and have the city make some land available, so this private entity can build a facility that will be used as a community center. Am I replaying that out correctly? Okay.
So you want the, the, the city to give the land?
No, the city already owns the land.
But.
The park, the, from the, the, the land was given to the city by an individual, a family that lives in Pleasant Hill. Okay, so the city owns property. The initial plans were the city was gonna put a park there and a community center. Those plans are over in the Parks and Recreation Department.
The park is there though, already.
Mm-hmm, the park is already there, so now we're just asking for the community center.
So, but you want the city to fund the community center?
We're helping through grant writing.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, I, I didn't hear any funding, I just heard make the land available. You don't want the taxpayers of New Bern to write a check to build a building, you're gonna get that money through.
If they want to, that's fine too.
I'm sure you.
But, but we're asking, we're gonna be doing a lot of the funding through grant writing through the association, plus we want the city to partner up and share the expense.
That sounds like funding to me.
And then next month.
I, I didn't get the funding part, okay, so, that'll be, you know, up to the board to decide if that's a priority for the board, right? I, I get it's a priority for you, so that's clear.
But it's a priority for Ward Five. The citizens of Ward Five.
I know, but Pleasant Hill community of Ward Five, because Ward Five extends into other parts.
Exactly, just like the park right now is utilized by citizens from all over the city.
And I think it fits the goals that the board, it, it fits within the framework that the goal, board has outlined, right? As it relates to diversifying the use of the parks, this is a diversification, use of public parks. Now, writing the check to pay for is a whole nother question, but it also fits the partnership model here, C, right? Investigating partnership, this is a partnership with a private entity, an association, to utilize and diversify the parks usage. All that kinda fits in the framework that you outlined. Now, the piece about whether the board wants to fund it or make the land available is a board decision, I guess, right? But ultimately, the board has to decide if that's how they wanna use the land, which is consistent with some of the vision that you guys have outlined. So, all, I'm not gonna say.
What's always been a problem for, for the Pleasant Hill community is that the way New Bern grew, it didn't grow kind of like homogenously, it kinda fragmentally or heterogeneously grew out here and there, and if you wanna have a meeting over at Bridgestone, you maybe could go to Tri-City Fire Department, or if you were out in the James City area, you could go to the fire station there, or, which happens, there's been several meetings out there, or all around New Bern, you could go to a rec center or city hall or somewhere and have a meeting. Um, Pleasant Hill's always had the problem that there's no, the only opportunity, we've had one meeting out there, and we were told that was the first and last, because, uh, the water plant was used, and by the time it was used, homeland security came into play because of the concerns of the security of your water supply. So, where that maybe could've been a building that the community could've used because of the security needs, that's just not a reality in today's world to have public meetings at the water plant. So that kinda leaves it very unique that all other areas of New Bern geographically have either municipal buildings or community buildings, fire pumps, et cetera, volunteer fire pumps where they can do it, so, they're kinda stuck in a binnet hole up there.
They'll build, they'll build a new fire station and a community center together.
Well, you know, and that's a thought, because we need one out in that direction anyway, and, you know, we need to look at all possibilities. But we, but the, the, it's not a joke, because that's the area that needs to be served or somewhere, not necessarily in Pleasant Hill.
The car department will come and play special with Mark Marietta Park.
Mm-hmm.
Well, and that's the other question, how close is the park?
I'm not really, um.
How close is Maryetta Park to that park?
About three miles.
Is that an option?
Sure we getting an emphasis.
I'm just, I'm just telling you.
Alright, so I think whether the funding piece is gonna happen is another discussion, I just solved that today, right? But I think, have we captured the community center spirit as an objective? Yes?
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Did we capture the community center objective? Yes, we did, is it on the board the way you guys wanna see it? Pleasant Hills Community Center partially funded grants being sought by community association.
Uh, yeah, and, and I know it's gonna be discussed, we don't need to be too worried about the details now, but, cause I know it's gonna be discussed. But when you start, I, a community centers are great, I think they're important, like the mayor said, a lot of the communities now can have meetings at fire stations and other areas throughout, there's really nothing out there, I'll agree with that. But when you start talking about after-school care and stuff like that, who's gonna be responsible for that, the community or the city? Or don't we know yet?
How does the city, um, where is Stanley White and West New Bern, how do they run their programs?
I don't have, do they do it?
City-funded program in the city.
Exactly, that's what, that's why we want the park to make the city.
That we're trying to make more of a program.
Can make the, the running of the different programs.
So the city offers daycare now, or after-school care?
No, 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 not.
Yeah, after-school programs.
Really?
At Stanley, after-school, not daycare, but after-school programs, they do it Stanley White, but we're looking to outsource that to the Boys and Girls.
They have both the colleges, correct?
Yes.
They still have both, that's why I've been saying that, so they have one, and we need to combine it and let the Boys and Girls Club run it.
So, I think maybe some collaboration between this group and you, there might be a Boys and Girls Club that could take over some of that responsibility, the city wouldn't have to run it, cause you guys have already gone down that path, so that might make sense.
I, I know we got the, um, I just have a question on this, cause, you know, with having a community center, um, and the city partners, who's responsible for the upkeep? Would, are you looking for the city to partner and give funds, or is that gonna be a city, um, community center? Or is the, the, the association gonna be responsible for it? It's gonna be, like I said, partner with the city, let them take responsibility, or the maintenance upkeep, just like they do for the other two centers.
I, 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 in fairness, I don't think those detailed questions, anyone knows the answer to, right?
I was, I just wanna ask her though, on it.
Yeah, I think, I think that's what we want staff to go figure out, right?
What's her vision?
What's the vision, what's the detailed question? I'm sorry?
I say you have to know her vision, on, for me, I'm, I'm, please don't take me, if she just wanted the city to give some money, not to say that it wasn't, that's it, and they were gonna run it, then there's no need to have staff, that's a decision on whether we got the four votes or not. So I wanted to know her vision on how, you know, what she wanted altogether, cause then that's how you can say, okay, Mr. Foster, this is what she wants. So, this is the first time I'm necessarily really hearing in detail, because, you know, we all be together, it creates some issues, so that's why I wanted her just elaborate on what she was saying.
And did she do that effectively?
Yes.
Okay, so you're happy?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions on this section? Wow, alright, so we've got three, we're directionally correct, I think I need some wordsmithing, but, we're kinda getting there. We've got the time maybe for one light version, where's the lighting?
No such thing.
Well, I thought Parks was, but who would've thought? It's, it's not up there.
It's just because it's important, it's been neglected for so long, it's really important, I was looking at this, we got public safety, fiscal responsibility.
Let's jump into public safety.
Oh, on public safety before we get into, I haven't heard it discussed, but cybersecurity, I mean, both for our employees and for our, our customers that are using our system, and I'm very concerned about that for, for the city.
I, I'm not sure how you wanna handle that, that's really a question for you guys.
I'm gonna put it up here for now.
Well, parking.
Yeah, I think, um, as far as the, the new ERP system, it's, I think a lot of that is taken care of and inherent in the system, but I'll put it up here and we can.
It's probably another discussion, and, and I, I know when I was, um, uh, uh, some of those sessions, you need to check with the lawyer, uh, some of your discussions about cybersecurity vulnerability by state law or protected in private meetings, and this is still a public meeting being recorded, so some of the topics in cybersecurity need to be protected, because if someone watches on the internet, a public meeting on how, where the nuances are that you can attack in the city of New Bern, the next thing you know, someone's gonna attack the city of New Bern in those categories. So, you need to check with the lawyer to find out public records and what's allowed and not allowed to be said in a private meeting or something. I don't know your specific law.
Very good information.
So, but yeah, it's, it's very common, if you, just as a general, cause I know this topic very well, as a state CIO, if you tell the bad guys that you have vulnerability, they're gonna attack you. If you tell the bad guys that you're good at protecting yourself in these categories, they're gonna attack you, cause it's a game. So the best thing is not to talk about it. So that's where you need to get the lawyer to make sure that what's permitted and not permitted in a public and a private meeting. And I don't know what your laws are here in this city, so, so we'll defer that to later discussion. Alright, so we're gonna go to public safety, uh, we're gonna enhance it through training, efficient service, and expanded infrastructure. So, where's the, assess the needs across? I think this is where you get to the point of, is there a need for a new fire station? Right, I, I know that there's some passion that there is one, but first you need to kind of assess, and maybe this work's already been done, but someone needs to assess the need for one, there's all kinds of studies across the country about how many, you know, fires personally need per population, per square miles, all that kinda stuff, that work, I guess, has been done, and you, you've started to assemble that. So we don't need to review all that today in this room, but that needs to be part of this, the board needs to be aware of that and know where the city stands as it relates to this need, it probably needs to be scaled over to this four-year commitment that we're looking at, cause you'll probably have a population growth, you guys can probably segment where that population growth is occurring, and that'll help pinpoint where is the additional infrastructure as it relates to all public safety, not just fire, the police and that, it, probably the same thing with utilities, right? If you're growing in this side of town, you gotta get your broadband there, you gotta get your power there, you gotta get your pump, water and sewage, et cetera.
I think A and B, we're trying to walk the, the, walk the dog, for lack of a better term, that will help us answer one question, which we're gonna need to answer. that will help us answer one question, which we're going to need to answer. We've talked both about the need for a new, a fourth fire station. We've also batted around the idea of the need to also maybe possibly move the emergency operations center, the IT department, potentially the comm center out of the police department. Police department grows, they're kind of full in their building, do we move the comm center? So, I think Mark and I put A and B to try to get a process around trying to make the determination of whether we build a fire station or do we build a little bit more of a complex that might have a police substation, a comm center, an EOC, an IT department, and/or fire. And so, we need to do that somehow objectively, or the board can decide. But as you can imagine, there's significant cost difference between the two, so.
Isn't our emergency operations center at the water resources?
Yeah, it's actually one of the worst places you could ever have one.
Which is identified as a place you shouldn't have.
Department of Homeland Security.
I already know.
Department of Homeland Security.
I already know.
Yeah, let me ask you, the, the board members here, I mean, I, I was, I had asked for a demonstration or something about it, fire chiefs, so you guys would have a better understanding of the need. Because I know some of you have absolutely no idea of the, of the need.
Why you don't look at me?
Because you're one of the new ones. Do you know whether or not we need one, huh?
Don't do that, though, don't do that.
Okay, so, um, I, I reckon, to keep me from going through a speech, can we all agree at this point in time that a fourth fire station is needed? And I'll back that up by saying that the Board of Aldermen adopted this fire department's strategic plan. And in this plan, it states that a new fire station is needed. So, unless, unless you want me to go through the reasons why we need it, not where, because I don't think that's important now, I think that would be a breakout discussion later. But why we need it and, uh.
Does it say in those plans where they wanted it to be?
It doesn't state, I mean, that the plan, you know, the bottom, the bottom line is, is this. Back in nineteen ninety-three, fire chief from Raleigh, North Carolina, Chief Sherman Pickard was hired by the city of New Bern through the League of Municipalities to do an assessment on fire station needs. And at that point, he said, "A fire station is needed on Seventeen South." We have that document, you know? Now, roads have changed, things have changed, stuff like that, that since then, you know, where we need a fire station right now? We need a fire station to serve the Pleasant Hill community. And we need a fire station eventually to serve the Seventeen South community. Can that be one house? I don't think this is the time and place to discuss that. Does it need to be one house now to serve one community? But I, I've worked with the city a long time, and I know that we don't have the money to go build two new fire stations and house new, with new fire trucks and new personnel. But we have to start taking some steps in that direction. And there's nothing, there's plenty of opportunity right now to build a fire station to serve the Pleasant Hill community. Because we know about where that fire station is going to be. And that fire station is not necessarily going to serve the Seventeen South community. The fire chief will tell you in his report that eventually New Bern's going to need two firehouses. Eventually, New Bern might have to close a firehouse and relocate one over on the other side of the river because of the way the city's growing. And so, this, this happens all the time. Cities, communities close firehouses and sell their properties and relocate them all the time to move with the, the population. I know Rocky Mountain's done it several times. In fact, Rocky Mountain used to build fire stations that looked like residential property. So, when they sell them, they could sell them as residential property.
But what about the effect on the wards that these fire stations don't impact and the taxes that they pay to fund that? How do we, as representatives, explain that?
I don't understand the question.
So, if you, if we get a, a firehouse in Pleasant Hill, will that firehouse take down by fire or, um, over in Monterey Circle? So, when you, what we're doing.
That's why I just said, it, it, and a lot of, it, it, and I don't know if this is the time and place to debate that.
Probably not.
Well, I mean, on the, on the, but I don't want him to say, can we all agree that we need, you know, that, don't say that statement.
Well, I, I think it's premature, I'm going to jump in. I think it's premature to say we agree on whether it's a fire station or not. It's not fair, Representative Alderman, to ask the people without much facts.
Exactly, the reason why I wanted a presentation before this meeting.
Right, but this meeting's not about deciding whether we need a fire station. I know it's a priority for you, just like Chess is a priority for her. But what we're trying to do is set objectives, goals.
Okay, so, how do I put, how do I put a fire station on the list of things that are needed?
Unless I can. We've got it right here. We're going to assess future public safety needs across police, fire, and emergency management. And they're going to do that objectively. And if that means we need a new fire station, they're going to come back. The fire chief will be involved in that process because he's part of his staff. Fire chief will get to come in and present to this board and tell the story about where and why a fire station is needed. But we're not trying to decide that today.
That's fine, that's right.
And, and stupid Bobby, but he's not saying it's going to be in Pleasant Hill because it's not going to be in Pleasant Hill. It's going to be in Ward Five, out in that area, which was.
I don't think, I don't think anybody knows where it's going to be at this very moment.
But I'm saying, this is what we're asking.
And maybe a recommendation in that report, but nineteen ninety-three was a long time ago.
That a priority is building a fire station, I would say.
So, there is a, there is a priority to build, to assess the needs and decide whether a fire station is needed. But my guess is, having worked in infrastructure business for a long time, if you need a fire station, you probably need more policemen, right?
So, I, I can't speak to that.
I know you can, but that's the point why we need someone who can assess.
I mean, the police, the police officers, we're not, we're not growing. So, the police officers are already there. The, the need is, is that we grew and we didn't build fire stations.
But we hired policemen.
Well, I don't know.
That's my point, if you need.
Or does that have to do with the.
What does that have to do with the location of a fire station?
Because the reason why you need a fire station is probably because you've outgrown the capacity of the ones you have.
No.
No.
We, because it's a ten-minute response time to get some areas.
Or somebody needs to consolidate instead of rebuild.
We had somebody die because they couldn't get out of the equipment. It took them twenty minutes to get out.
The, the, the bottom line is that there's standards. You're familiar with NFPA standards.
Right.
Standards state that, you know, first duty should be within four minutes and second duty should be shortly thereafter. What is it, Chrissy? I've lost it, what's second duty? Supposed to be six minutes, eight minutes on. You know, and, and I, we've got, we've got, you know, first duty making seven minutes and second duty making over ten minutes in communities. So, that tells you, a fire station, who are you going to outsource it to?
I'm just throwing stuff out there.
Where, where are you?
Myself.
I lost my train of thought. That tells, that tells me that, and that should tell you that there's a need. You know, when you have a thirty-square-mile city and the average, that, you know, similar cities our size have, uh, serve four-point-nine square miles and we're serving over ten miles per house, that should tell you that the need is there.
Not to mention the waterways you have to cross.
Absolutely, and not only, not only that, then you've got our benchmark cities, the average number of personnel is ninety, and we're at sixties. So, the need is there, just by looking at the, the, the reports, the, and, and, and this, this Board of Aldermen has already adopted this plan. So, they've accepted this fact, the need's there. So, I understand that, you know, we're not going to discuss where now. That would be, the fire chief needs to guide us on that. But we just definitely need to start making steps towards the construction of a fire station.
I think there's a commitment to put a goal and objective around understanding the needs of the fire department and make sure the public's needs are being met. Is that a safe assumption from the board?
Sounds great to me.
And, and then that should lead to the direction you're trying to get to.
Sure.
And I would say, Chris, if our goal is tomorrow to have a discussion about funding, we probably need to know whether the board's commitment is towards a fire station because of the expense and the multi-year planning that's involved and the.
Well, if you're going to make that decision tomorrow, I want the fire chief to do his presentation first.
So, that may be something we want to resolve if, if we're trying to.
We haven't even gotten through the third, we're only still in the third of six, right? And we're about to run out of time.
Oh, we're making decisions tomorrow.
I'm saying, yeah.
I'm going to bring you breakfast, those are your belly meat.
All right, what else is not on the public safety? We've got a lot of energy around the fire. Can we go back to the original submission? Did we miss something? Just want to make sure we've got it all over the one document. New fire station, additional firefighters, that's part of that fire study, hostile police officers, that's part of the study, fire station in Ward Five, that's still part of the study. All right, so I think we've got the public safety stuff from the, your submissions here. So, what's not here related to public safety? And I might go with the mayor's comment about cybersecurity because you look at what happened in Mecklenburg County with the ransomware event. It was a significant event for that county and cost them a lot of money and they've lost services to the citizens. So, I do think there might need to be some objective around, you know, assessing public, that's a public safety issue and cybersecurity and IT matters. And I don't want to put words in your mouth, but that might be where it fits.
I think it's public safety.
Were you talking about, I saw where it said, um, another, uh, a police substation in James City? I mean, well, I saw that as one of the things up there.
That was something submitted by.
Okay, um, where our substation is at the mall? Is it, is it possible that, you know, those people could be moved out there to, I, I don't know how you assess. It's not like a fire station said you need so many within response time.
Can I, can I talk about that? Because that was.
Okay, I'm just asking a question.
Just like a, a fire department or just like a fireman responding from downtown out there, the, the idea from, and this came out of a lot of people in colors in Turbina, the idea is, is that if there was an office and it could be built at the fire station, if there's an office where a police officer could go to do his telephone calls, report writing, cup coffee drinking or something like that, or to interview someone that doesn't necessarily want to have a police car sitting in the driveway, that just an office space somewhere would be available for them to be able to use to keep from having to drive from Carolina Colors, Evans Mill, all the way back over to that. Uh, i- if you want to know truth, it could be something that could be added to the fire station over there just to give them a place to go. I've talked to the chief about it. The, the objective is, is to keep the police officers in the community. Right now, the police officers, when they come back.
Developments out there.
When the police officers come back to New Bern to take care of some of their needs, then it's another, it's a ten, twelve-mile response time back out there.
So, wouldn't that be the, right here?
It, it would be.
And, and so, I think, and I think you made a really good, uh, point. And I guess we need to see if the board concurs, is there's an objective to keep police close to the community, keep them in the community.
Well, it's called community policing for a reason, right?
I, I get it, but does the board agree that that's what y'all want?
Is this going to cost us money to have this, um, office over at?
Everything costs money, honey.
Right, so then it sounds like it's a driving issue for the police officer to get to the station to do his work and.
It's, it's being out of the territory.
Yeah, there is a, there. You know, when they. Community policing is a common moniker. And it might be that you want the police chief to come in and talk to the board about what that means. Because I'm not a police expert, but there is a, you do want to keep police close to the citizens. They want to be visible, they want to be out and about, right? That's how you keep crime down. And so, is the public safety, you know, some of the objectives for y'all might be to reduce crime rate, use community policing as an example. None of that's represented here in your goals. And I don't know if it should be, I mean, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but if that's something that's a priority for the board, it should be relative to your goals. I just feel like we're in the wot in the house, we're not the wise. We're talking about stations and substations and instead of why do we want those things? Like you said, we want those things because we want the police closer to community. That's our, that's what we need to be talking about. Then we'll get into the niche of everything else.
Well, I, I agree with you, and I think doing this is a why. Because if we do this, it will make them closer to the community, it'll keep them into the community.
Right, but the goal, the goal and the objective is, in using the police as an example, is have them close to the community. Another goal and objective may be to match the national standards of response time for fire response, right? So, that would be your goal and objective, and the only way you can achieve that is to build the fire station you want.
Yeah.
Right?
Let's go back to the police.
But let's raise it up a little level, right? That's where we need to be getting goals and objectives up here. Now, the goal's not to build a fire station, back to the circle that we started with, why. The reason why you want to build a fire station is to improve response times to match national standards so that the citizens are safe.
It's, that's the main thing, it's public, it's to keep the citizens and property safe.
Right, so that, that someone.
Houses burned down, it takes ten minutes to drive there.
Right.
I mean, just for an example, the mayor and myself and Chrissy were on the committee for the strategic plan for the fire department. And we sat there, what was it, two days? Two, two or three days? And we never once talked about a fire station. We talked about what are our goals and objectives as to improve response times. You know, that could be through working with NCDOT on, on signals to make sure that signals are automatically changed. So, that helps response times. But we talked about communications from nine-one-one comm center. You know, how can we shave off thirty seconds to a minute to help with that response time? And I think that's, it's, it's difficult as a, a little official because we all want to see things happen and we all have ideas on how to get there. But as we see, it's challenged when you have seven people that you're trying to get a consensus of. Because Barbara wants a community center in Ward Five, means absolutely nothing. Zero towards six. Bobby wants a fire station, means zero, maybe five percent, because I know what you're going to say, towards six. But I understand everybody has their own things, but we have to kind of get above this because when you, I don't know if you've looked at these or not, but if you take a look at this page that JR submitted to us, the one revenue versus expense, including current initiatives, these are what the want list was that everybody submitted. And if you look real quick, it doesn't take long for these revenues to come short of these expenditures.
Actually, that's just the stuff that staff is already working on from the previous board. That's not, none of the.
So, we haven't even talked about any of this. So, I think that.
And when you scroll down and you look at these numbers, like I was telling her, we need to be outsourcing some of this stuff.
Outsourcing's not free.
Right, that's true, but you, you know.
Absolutely. But you look at creative ways to figure it out.
It's very easy to talk about what we want and what we want to try to make promises to our constituents. The difficult part is going to be how we want to fund them. Because I can guarantee you that there's no, I've been here for four years. I know there's not enough fluff in this budget to cut to go to a new fire station, not raise taxes. I can guarantee you that.
And then if we raise taxes, we all have to deal with our constituents on how they feel.
And I'm not saying that might not be the right decision to make.
Right.
I'm just saying that when we're talking about all of these things, we've got to start getting to a point where we prioritize them. And I think, you know, with a police station, so somebody can have somewhere to go sit and do a report and drink a cup of coffee, as you said, Bobby, is, is going to be very challenging to go out to your constituents and say, "I want to raise your taxes a nickel because." And I'm probably done.
All, it's, it's, this is the hard part.
I think it's our job to keep our public safe. Our, safe, I think it's our job. You know, we, we, there's, there's a lot of things that our citizens are expected of us. And to protect them from crime and fire and natural disasters and everything, which we do a wonderful job at, is, is top on a lot of them's list.
Sure is.
Yeah. If, if they're, if they don't feel safe, they don't feel safe, they, they're not going to be here.
And public works is just as important because they need water, right? You look at the cities that are on the coal ash and they're bottling water into those citizens. So, water, so it's not public safety is also everything the city.
But I don't think, I don't think having a water department is mandated by law like, like a, isn't it mandated by law for your municipality to have public safety of some sort?
The only thing that's here mandated by inspections is building inspections.
Well, are we, my thing is with the fire station, I mean, are we operating improperly right now?
Yes.
So, then that's, to me, that's the why. If we're, if we've been operating, meaning like, you know, we're supposed to have eight people in one building, we only have five, then that's more the issue than, we need to figure that out and then build it a new fire station. Because if we can't get eight in one building, we want to build a whole new building. So, that's the, what I need to understand is that's the why for me, which is the bigger picture. Like he was saying, whatever, you know, committee he sat on to kind of figure out without spending the money, how we're fixing the situation if we're already like, can be, you know.
This is the exact reason why I wanted this presentation before this.
Wasn't this, wasn't this the presentation that was emailed to us, though?
Yeah, but let, let's just be clear, this, this meeting was never to approve a fire station. You may have walked in with that expectation.
But, but if I, if I have, if I, if we have to vote, but it's going to be on this list, they need to know the reason why it's needed.
Well, this meeting was to be talking about it. So, for him, he feels it, you know, that's necessary for all of us to understand when we make our.
I mean, it may be acceptable to some people for a small pile on the stove to catch on fire and their house burn down. In some communities, that might be acceptable.
Real quick, tomorrow, we're, we're going to be voting, we're not going to be voting, okay? You're going to be directing us to move forward with this list with some consensus. This will come back to you for a full report and a full approval by the board. By that time, your fire station, uh, presentation will have begun.
By that time, your fire station presentation will have begun. Part of your request for the presentation was that we bring you information on safer grant submissions and all this other stuff. They haven't even announced when the safer grant's coming out yet.
I said that during the meeting, I knew that.
Right. So that was part of the request, though. I mean, we're waiting, and that shouldn't happen anytime now. We've got all the data, Chrissy, and they've been working together. We've been working with Alice, we've got maps, we've got everything ready to go until we get the safer grant stuff. And then when we do, we're going to be before y'all with every bit of that information to present to you.
Safer...
Once again, building a fire station...
Safer grants is one thing.
But one, building a fire station, I understood. Building a fire station is down on this level. What we're looking for from this board is the policy you want to set. Number one, we want public safety to be a priority, okay? That's your goal, all right? Provide public safety through enhanced training, efficient service, and expanded infrastructure. Underneath that, we need to determine, okay, what is acceptable as far as service delivery that we're going to be giving our citizens? That's the policy set that you want. That's the goal. We want, I don't even want to call it equitable service, because if I live to, next to a fire station, I'm going to get faster service than somebody that lives five miles away. What is acceptable service to our citizens with regards to police delivery and fire delivery? And that's what we need to establish. And then we as staff will bring before you what we need to make that happen. That's what needs to happen. And one thing that might align that to is the national recommendations that you were referencing. I forgot the acronym, because I'm acronym challenging. And if it says that response time nationally should average eight minutes or whatever you said it was, and response times in this city are 10 minutes, what can be done to reduce it? All those things, including, you know, better coordination with 911. Some of those response times may be the handoff between the city 911 and the county 911, which gives you a great opportunity to go have that discussion with the county folks about the handoffs. The cellular, I know from 911, cellular's driving 911 crazy. The state's already deploying a new 911 system over the next several years that will fix cellular location maps, which will improve response times, right? So there's already things in flight that were improved response times. But at the end of the day, you might need a new fire station. That's what staff will come back with a recommendation with the fire chief, saying, "Yes, we need one, and here's where we think we should stick it on the map." But the objective isn't to build a fire station. The objective is to, you want the staff to go improve response times.
One of our issues is how we've grown. We just grew in a zigzag manner. You know, we didn't grow like this, you know? We, all of a sudden, we annexed Pleasant Hill and we were all the way over here. And then, you know, we went across the river and all of that came in it. So when we built these fire stations, like our main station, other things, we didn't have these other areas. And, you know, they just, so it really has put us in a bad position in that we've taken these people in, they're paying their taxes, but we don't necessarily have the, the services in their area because we went like this instead of in a more structured, right?
So that's a good point that you just made.
And that's why we're, we're paying the piper right now, is because of what happened. And, you know, we're just going to have to look at it. It's what happened, you know, Pleasant Hill didn't want to be annexed. They got it, it was before forced annexation, which was illegal, but they, they took them in. And now we have to provide the services to them. And that includes fire and police, but, and, you know, whoever thought that Tawburna, when I heard about Tawburna, I didn't know who, whose schools to live out there, was so far from New Bern. And boom, it's full. Carolina Colors, boom, it's starting to fill right up and people are buying. Then we've got Longleaf Pines, more, that whole area is going to be...
Blue water down there.
Yeah, it's going to be incredible. And so there's all this growth that we never imagined 25 years ago when we were building a new police station, when we were building a new fire station. So it really, where they are now is probably not strategic, based on the growth of our city. But they're where they are. Would you not agree they're not strategically located in such cases?
I'd say the location... You want them to do this, then? Isn't that what you just said?
Yes.
Do B. Staff, go do B.
Right.
And if that means build a new fire station, they're going to tell you that. Because I'm sure the police, the fire chief already thinks he needs one, right? And he's got a plan to get one, it's in that document right there, right? But that's really, the objective is here, the fire station's below that.
Well, we have to put a little, we have a satellite fire station out in the community across the river. Because we just, we grew out there, we had to put something out there. So why should we put something out there and not put something on the other end of town, which is the Crayburn and the Pleasant Hill and that area?
Bobby, do you know what's the response time for out in the Pleasant Hill area? Is it about 10 minutes or more?
Your first due is seven minutes, your second due is over 10 minutes.
And that's considering that they passed by a volunteer station in there.
Let the fire chief tell you about that, too.
About volunteers?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Chris, you can look at that map behind you. That's a map of our city. And where it's gray, that's not the city of New Bern. And you see how disjointed it's some, in some cases can be. I mean, I've been staring at it for the last two hours, thinking, "Lord have mercy."
It's a good, good visual.
It is a good visual. Trent Woods is smack in the middle of it. We have to go around that, it's not...
And one of the things that this city's got to really think about, too, because I've been, and I've been going to some meetings, is this new highway that's going in in James City, which is going to cut off a lot of, some locations that the Fire Department and the Police Department currently are traveling. It's going to be a four-year construction phase, which is going to take that 10 or 12 minutes response time for second due from downtown to turn it into a 20-minute response time. Yeah, and with, yeah, there's no need to argue about it right now, Bill Yancey.
I think we're in agreement, we need to, we need to look into it.
Needs to be looked at.
Chris, I'm taking a shot at A, B, C, and D. I don't know if that gets us a little more up to the Y.
Does everybody take a look at this real quick?
C might be a subset of, combination of B.
You want to put your emergency operations center under that? I mean, I know, and it might not be in this year and next year. It might be the five-year plan or something. But is it something that we put and just put it as number six instead of number one or two?
I think our thoughts are putting, are putting operations here included, emergency operations center.
But understand, state that in the down, you know, if that's what you think, and that's fine. So we know in the overall plan, you know, so you've got something that the board's behind us coming through can look at as well. EOC relocation, is that what it mean, would mean, or?
Well, we have no EOC building. We have a room that we convert, so...
That's what you did sitting all over the years, that was what you was saying.
Agreed, agreed. And, and let me just say this. You can forget safer grant. I think, I, I agree that we should apply, but the first thing they're going to tell you is, "You've got too dang much money." Yeah, when, when I received that one in over a million dollars in safer grants, our reserve was down under 6% or 7%. And that was the justification, because on the grant, they ask you, "Why can't you pay for this?" And if we tell them we got 40% reserves, they're going to laugh at us.
Don't worry, we can spend it, and then you can save it.
It looks like we're going to it here.
Well, and the other thing is, on the EOC, I know the 911 board has approved co-locating EOCs with 911 centers and paid for them.
Well, and that's a good, that's a good thing to happen. I mean, 911 and EOCs are, it's, it's a good merger together, you know?
Right, so when you look at some of that, I think that that may become a path way. All right, so we're nearing the end of our time together. I think we're, we're 70%. I appreciate you working through that with us. So we're about 70% of the way on emergency management. I'm sure we'll probably want to go back and revisit a couple of these.